Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the Town of Greenwich Planning and Zoning Commission, a meeting being held virtually on Wednesday, October 16th, 2024. Mr. McRae may have to leave early tonight. If he does, the first seated alternate will be Mr. Wells, who shall seat for him unbeknownst to him until just now. The first item, as you can see from the agenda, if you have it, has been withdrawn. That was a decision item at 280 Otter Rock Drive. And that has been withdrawn. We anticipate it will be resubmitted at some time in the future. Next, we have had a postponement for Item 7 GFC Havemeyer LLC for a final site plan and special permit at Mason Street and Havemeyer Place. Following is our three postponements by Greenwich American, Inc. For an application located at One American Lane in the northwest of Greenwich. And those are the zoning map amendment, the final site plan, and special permit, as well as a zoning text amendment. Think I've got them all? All the postponements? Yes, and all the withdrawals? Okay, so with that, we will go to the second item on the agenda, which is Tesla, Inc. for a final site plan for renovation of the existing parking lot, including striping and removal of asphalt areas, improvement of the parking lot. This is at 1810 East Putnam Avenue in the GB zone. And with that, the applicant is Ms. Kaufman.
Correct.
And we will bring her in. Or did you do that already? Yes, you did.
I think there she is.
Yep. Okay. Hello, Ms. Kaufman, whenever you're ready to go.
Audio.
Hello, just to remind, just to remind everybody who's listening and watching, this application for Tesla is a property that is in both Greenwich and Stamford. The part of the property that's in Greenwich is the parking lot. It also has exit onto Latins Rock. And we will be discussing only the part of the property that is in Greenwich at this time.
That's correct.
Go ahead, Ms. Kaufman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just as a, before I begin, if as a matter of administration, I have my associate, Dan Conan, here with me. He's going to run the PowerPoint. And I see that I have a terrible, a terrible glare from the sun, so let me try to fix that as well. That better. Patrick, is, are we able to promote Dan?
Happy to do it. Yeah, Mr. Conan should be coming in, and then I'll give him privileges shortly.
Wonderful. There, there he is. And also with me today, my name is Jackie Kaufman, and my associate here, Dan Conan. We are attorneys with Carmody Torrance Sandac and Hennessy with office located in Stamford, Connecticut. We're here tonight on behalf of Tesla, Inc., for the application that was just summarized. Also with us are our landscape architect, Matt Pop, our engineer, Dave Ginter, and I believe representatives, applicants' representatives, who I haven't had a chance, I can't tell if they're in the meeting here or not, but to introduce them, they include Lucy Lee of Tesla. And she may have others with her as well, who I, who I also, who I also can't see at this time. We can lean on any of those additional folks to answer any questions that you have.
I'm sorry, Ms. Kaufman, why are you not able to see the participants?
Oh, I just don't, I'm trying to see.
Oh, okay.
No, no, if they're here, I can see all the participants in the meeting, but I know that they've logged into the meeting, but I don't, I don't know that I can, I have the ability to see them.
Okay. All right, go right ahead.
I don't, I don't see them.
Just go, go right ahead.
Okay, thank you so much. Dan, can you please, the, the, to the next slide, please? Thank you so much. So this is the subject property here. It's known as 1810 East Putnam Avenue in Greenwich. The property is part of a larger parcel of land that's located in both Stamford and the ML Zone, which is an industrial zone, and the commercial GB zone. If you're familiar where, where the Shop Right is and the Ethan Allen Store, this is right behind it. You can see that it's bordered by East Putnam Avenue to the north and by Latins Rock Road to the west. The entire parcel is owned by Stamper Associates LLC. And the parcel that's located in Stamford is 7.9 acres. And you can see that it's, that's included in the yellow box to the right of the red line. And for the purposes of the things you've seen, you've seen them broken out as parcel one, two, and three, and I will show you that just momentarily. But to the left of the red line, or the red line itself, represents the town line between Stamford and Greenwich. And the history of the property is such that it was developed at a time, this is a commercial office park, and it was developed with the building. And Dan, if you can point to the building on the red line and that, right there, that building right there, that's our, that's our, our client Tesla's new service and leasing facility. And, but that building has historically always been parked in Greenwich. And we have the history of that, which we provided to you, dates back to December of 1960, showing the companion uses for the parking entirely in Greenwich and for the use entirely located in Stamford. So if we can advance to the next slide, please? Oh, that's the GB zone. That is the zone that the parking lot is located in, which allows for motor vehicle, motor vehicle storage. Next, please? Let's zoom out here.
Actually, yeah, okay.
Again, here's the building. And here are the two pieces. Let's, let's advance even to the next slide for a moment, please, Dan. This is, this is a little bit more helpful. So we're here tonight to ask for a modification of an existing approval in Greenwich, which has historic, within the red boundary. So when we talk about parcels one, two, and three, the building, the subject building is considered to be parcel one, located in Stamford. And then parcel two is the area we have identified here as existing parking, no changes. And then the parcel that is the subject of this review is outlined here in red. And the history of the property is important because what was outlined in red had, by the entire, I should say entire parcel that's located in Greenwich, has had approval for parking uses by way of special exception since 1960. Then in 1982, the area, and the area that's outlined in red, was authorized for special exceptions to, and variances, to allow for parking that was not associated with the building for school buses. And that had increased over time from 40 to, there were some, as many as 81 in terms of what your approval say, although we don't, we're not clear on that number. It may have been less that were actually parked there over time. But this became critical because that area became detached from the building and gates were open onto Latins Rock Road. Previously, dating back to 1960, there was a condition on the approval from this commission that, that did not permit any through traffic on Latins Rock Road. But because the school buses would be serving students in the town of Greenwich, two gates were permitted to be there. Additional conditions also include landscape requirements. And we can, we're speak to that a little bit more as we've had a chance to respond to your briefing comments of yesterday. So one of the conditions, and the very specific condition, because truly nothing has changed over time since 1960, these two pieces have consistently been used for automobile parking. And in the history of your files, we have clarity that that is for the parking of motor vehicles and school buses.
Ms. Kaufman, Ms. Kaufman, Mr. McRae has his hand up, if you would.
She can finish, but I think just kind of getting right to the, get, get to the point of what you're proposing. I think we, we understand what the history was.
Clear understanding of the history. Okay, I'm happy to move forward with that. So, but there is a condition that requires that at any point in time, should the bus parking use be modified, it must return to the commission for a site plan approval. That's what brings us here to you today. So what we have before you is exactly that. Now, your regulations have changed over time, but we have tried to present to you a, a plan that returns or restores the use to its original 1960 use, which is the parking of motor vehicles, not of school buses. The, there is a fence that is located along the, along this red line in between parcels two and three. You don't even need to go that close, Dan, it's fine. That would be removed, and the parking area would now again be merged and used for the purposes of Tesla, Tesla's commercial use and industrial use that is located in Stamford. And those uses include the parking for employees, for the number of vehicles that are being, for vehicles being serviced, for loaner vehicles that are provided to customers during their service time, and also for lease fleet inventory as well. Just because the uses in Stamford, which again are permitted uses as of right, are inclusive of all of those uses. We did, and as I heard yesterday, a question was asked, do the uses in Stamford comply with the parking that's being proposed here? Yes, the answer is yes to that. We did include a copy of the zoning permit and an analysis of both the parking and the history of these sites and their companionship on both the Greenwich and the Stamford sides in your materials. I'm happy to.
Yeah, no, actually, if you could, if you could, in, in response to Mr. McRae's point, if you could go to the landscape plan that you submitted this afternoon, that was.
So yesterday, yes, during your, during your briefing, let's, this is, oh, this is just quickly, I know you mentioned this yesterday, but the imperfect, there are, there are no considerable changes here. What we're doing is just updating some of this parking lot, repaving it, but ultimately it will result in a, a loss of pervious coverage, so it is slightly less. We don't have any other problems with coverage that are associated with zoning. I know that we talked about, you spoke a little bit yesterday, and I think Mr. LaRoe.
If you, did you calculate your pervious impervious, including putting in islands for the trees after you revised?
Yes, because the entire, the entire property now is paved, so that does not cause any, any additional change to this. The pervious and impervious coverage will remain the same.
Well, your pervious would be increasing, would it not?
Oh, I'm sorry. No, no, our, our pervious coverage is not, we have Dave Ginter on the phone. I don't believe that it is increasing because, let's go, Dan, can you just?
Okay, so, so let's just go, let's just go quickly. You are adding the tree wells in the parking, in the parking lot every 10 spaces. That's what you're gonna do, right?
What we've done here, we're showing you that we've, we've added them into the middle. There was some discussion yesterday, rather than having one that is every 10 spaces. Dan, if you can just.
No, we would like you to comply with our regulations, every 10 spaces, tree island.
Okay, so I just, if I may speak to that point. What I, what we heard yesterday on the briefing, we provided you with the, with a modification here and had subsequent discussion with staff. And we have, on our Latins Rock roadside, on the perimeter side, we have 19 new trees, additional species that are being proposed there. When we provided one, two, three, we provided six trees within the parking lot. Was, I, we heard two things yesterday, which is, do we want them to apply to our, our regulations and have one every 10, an island every 10 spaces? An alternative that was recommended was that they could put, the Tesla could place the trees in the areas that were, that are paved and that were striped, that were not available to parking. And that is what we have proposed to you here tonight. We thought that that was worthy of discussion and maybe adequate.
So are you tight, are you tight for parking to comply with the Stanford regulations? That was why we were asking that yesterday.
We can meet all, we can meet all of our parking with the, we can meet all of our parking.
You are easily able to meet the Stanford parking regulations. Why wouldn't you meet our landscape regulations again?
Well, there were two things that we had proposed in our application. One is that we were really changing our, any condition that had previously been approved. We were modifying a prior approval. And so that there was ample, and there was significant landscaping being added to the perimeter as a buffer, and that since this use had always been a parking lot, that there, and there was some flexibility within your regulations, that this would make the most sense and provide both screening, shade, and beautification. And there seemed to be with the two regulations that are potentially, that are applicable to this spot, that this could also be provided to in satisfaction.
Anybody have any comments? Well, I'm just gonna.
Yes, Ms. Kaufman. The, the new, the new landscape plan has them in the center islands, but I'm seeing a conflict between this landscape plan and the one that was provided by Redness Me. They don't seem to jive, just as one issue.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, that was provided by, by who?
Redness Me. The site plan itself, it seemed, it seemed the geometry of the, the parking layouts were, were different. There were more spaces on the Redness Me plan than there are on the landscape plan.
Yes, we've removed some parking spaces to accommodate these landscape aisles, so that would.
Okay, great. So that gets back to, I think, actually, the original question. You, you have, you have more than enough parking to satisfy the, the Stanford requirements?
Yes, we do.
Okay, great. That's a good thing to know. Let's start really easy with the simple stuff. The southern gate is going to be closed and locked, and almost abandoned, right?
Yes, thank you. I just didn't get to get through that part of my presentation.
Go through this real quick.
The gate will remain, it will not be used, it will be locked. And I did believe you received, hopefully you received the memo that from Redness Me this morning that I forwarded on. The northerly gate will be available per your recommendation and the fire marshal's request.
Okay, and at the northern gate, it's asphalt to the, to the property line, or is that a landscaped area?
No, there is, it's, it's currently all asphalt to the gate and out to the street now.
And, okay, great.
That's how it will be.
Okay, and that would be, that would be emergency vehicle access only to the site. Okay, not used on a daily basis or by the business. Everybody's going out through the other, other side of the building, is that correct?
That's correct, and we are willing to accept the condition that that's not something that would be used for, for the commercial and industrial uses.
Okay, great. Now, it's the, from looking at the landscape plan, even the revised one, it seems the, there's a fence out there that's being moved? Or is it, what's the status of the fence?
So do you see that there's a line that is a little crooked, a crooked line in between these two parts, these two parking areas? Dan, can you just please, yeah, it's right there, to the left, go, go, go left, yep, right there. There's currently a chain link fence.
This is the one at Latins Rock, along the right of way.
Oh, no, along the right of way. There is, there is an existing fence there today. That fence will be maintained, and it will be repaired as needed.
Okay, great. Okay.
I'm not seeing where the regulation, okay, a couple of things. I'm not seeing where the regulation only applies to brand-new parking lots. Is that some language that you've seen, Ms. Kaufman?
Well, because this is a modification of a.
But I'm not, I'm not seeing that in our language. That's what I, I was looking for just now. That's, and I'm not seeing that we make an exemption for a modification to an existing parking lot.
Well, the, the use, it's the, this is an interpretation of ours. And in connection with that, we were trying to ensure that we had procedurally brought you an application that met your regulations. The condition, it's, the use itself is not changing. Okay, it's always been for, it has always been for vehicle parking. And that was originally for the entirety of the two parcels, parcels two and three, to serve the building in Stamford. And it's very clear through the history of your records that the, it didn't distinguish what type of vehicle parking was there. But because parcel three was temporarily being used for the town of Greenwich buses, we put up this chain link fence, and a condition was added that if the use were to change and not be for the town of Greenwich, because it was very critical in some of the things that were decided at that time, were, that were critical to that decision, that they would have to come back. So there was, was, or was, would there be a possibility that it would never come back as parking that was connected to the 106 Commerce Road building? Yes, and that's, so, but where it was, so it said you have to come back for a site plan application, not for a special exception application. And so the site plan application simply reverts the parking. And the purpose of our landscape plan, the way we were approaching it, is that we requested the waiver because we had no significant site development plan changes. This was really for an overview of the use to ensure that there wouldn't be through traffic that was reintroduced as part of a, a change to the bus parking lot use. And we looked at this as we were looking to revert to the 1960 approval that was already a place, never abandoned, and could be applicable here. Since subsequent applications had also required the prior tenants to, and owner, to put landscaping on the perimeter, we spent a considerable amount of time planning, reviewing that space, and creating a landscape plan that was consistent with all of the expectations that had been previously established. And since we were not changing the use or really intensifying the use in any way, and in fact, I might argue that we are moving more toward conformity and creating a situation where we have, you know, a contained use that's consistent with the expectation of the 1960 approval, that it wasn't necessary here. This wasn't a new build, a new use, or a reintroduction of uses that had not been previously contemplated and existed under prior entitlements and regulations. And that is, that is why. But as a compromise, and because we understand that you'd like to have.
And how many, how many trees in total? I, I'm.
There are, on parcel three, there are 119 spaces, which would require.
No, on parcel three, we have 150 plus 61 for buses. How does it go to 119?
Well, okay, so we have, we're just talking about, can we go back to the red?
Okay, so why don't you just go ahead and answer the question of how many trees you're putting in, in the 119 spaces? We'll deal with the number of parking spaces later. How many trees are you putting in?
We are recommending 19 trees on the street and six trees interior.
So.
A total of 12 trees would be required under your current regulations if we were to do that.
We discriminate between perimeter trees and trees that go for every parking space. We have two different sections of 6182 here and 6. So we, we differentiate. And we, we talk about perimeter buffers. And that's one animal. And then we talk about how many trees per parking space you would need in a, if you have an extensive parking lot. So we say one tree for every eight spaces with a planting island every 10 spaces. And you have, I'm not seeing 119, I'm seeing the 100. Okay, so you're saying in total you had how many trees again?
In total, we have 28 trees.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yeah.
Just real quick, Mr. Low, okay, so you have new trees in the paved islands, in some, some portions of the paved islands.
But that's five trees, looking at those, six trees.
As I'm seeing this in the new revised plan, it would be great if you could have, you know, any area that is, is open asphalt like that, just those paved areas that are just striped. If you could get something planted in there, specifically a tree. Right now, it's the honey locust, I think actually probably would do well. So anywhere there's just painted asphalt, as an example, that curved geometry there at the top of the page, as you see it. Can we put one there? Could we put one near, somewhere near the old gate? Those kind of things, getting them in there. So anywhere we can actually, you know, get, get a tree to get rid of the sea of asphalt. It'd be great if actually a couple of the spaces could be removed, and you could actually intermix some more trees there.
So on the inside of the lot, I'm sorry, just to do the math, Nick, on the inside of the lot, you would be looking for 15 trees. So now, you're not tight for parking, you say, so you could accommodate some additional trees inside the lot if you don't need all the parking to meet Stamford's requirements?
Is it, I, I will review that.
So we're trying to work, we're trying to work on heat island effect here. You've got a massive parking lot. And our goal is to alleviate heat, heat island effect as much as we can with every application that we see. When we look at this, you've got the perimeter trees, that's great, because we say perimeter buffers are required to have a continuous planted screening that would adequately screen parking in all seasons. There you can do evergreen, I believe, Mr. McRae was supportive of you doing.
Right, I have some thoughts on that as a specific, because it's.
Yeah, but so that's, so that's the, that's the perimeter planting. Now you get to the parking lot, and you've got the trade-off between what you need to meet the Stamford requirements, which we would not want to interfere with, and, and we can talk to them directly and make sure that we're cooperating with them. But on the other hand, you've got six trees where you would need twice as many.
Yes.
And we had understood, I didn't have a chance to look at whenever you redid this yesterday or today.
Oh, we just redid it today, yes, in response to comments received yesterday.
Again, I haven't had a chance to look at this today, but I had the expectation that you were gonna come in with something that met our regulations. And this is disappointing relative to that. If you could do better, as Mr. McRae is starting to suggest, if you could find some places where at least you're countering, at least you're getting the trees in, even if you're not fully meeting our regulations. I hear your argument, but you are restriping the lot. So you are redoing this entire lot. And therefore, I, I think, I, to me, it is, since you're redoing it, I, I can't say that our regulations wouldn't apply to it. I'm eager to hear a different opinion, and in the meantime, Mr. McRae, and then Mr. Yaski, and then Mr. Low. McRae, Yaski, and Low.
The more trees, the more trees in the interior of the parking lot would be best. That's great. As they, as they can find that place, the areas to, to fit them. You know, if, if you have some weird geometry of striped asphalt, can that be compromised a little bit to get another tree well in? To me, the more heavy lift and the more critical aspect of this is the edge of the right of way along Latins Rock. I have a photograph in front of me from 2015. It seemed at that point in this photograph, it was almost clear cut, and that the trees that are out there seem to just be, you know, wild.
I actually have a few photos. I'd love to share, something else that we are doing.
We don't, we don't need to look at a lot of photos right now. What we're looking at is, can you get closer to our rags? Nick, go ahead.
Okay, what I was thinking is, is rather than a very, very complicated landscape plan in and amongst some existing trees, that kind of stuff, is do a real hard evaluation of the, the deciduous trees that are out there, the mature trees, whether they're good or not, if they're compromised, are they going to be compromised by the wires that are along the side of the street? And then go back and say, what happens if we start over? And instead of actually this complicated landscape plan, we're looking at a evergreen hedge screen, which is what we're really looking for. Your, your parking inventory of cars, it'd be really nice if that could be screened from Latins Rock. So we're really not, you know, passing by this enormous parking lot every single day. Almost to the effect that, could that buffer area between the edge of the asphalt and the fence be almost clear cut of anything that's not worth saving? And that, what is it, the Thujia occidentalis, I guess, the native version of that shrub?
Let's just not go quite there, yeah, okay.
Yeah, we're not going quite there, but that's what I'm saying.
Don't landscape it, Nick.
I'm not landscaping.
Don't landscape it.
I'm just suggesting that intent to get something lush and green along that, the right of way, which basically now, kind of, it, it's almost belts and suspenders. We get stuff, some stuff inside for the, for the heat island effect, and we get a perimeter edge of screening, which actually is probably what everybody, what everybody would really appreciate.
I, I, I hear you, and I have Matt Pop on, and maybe we can invite him on to, to respond to that as well. But I do want to also point out.
People, I'm sorry, Ms. Kaufman, we're gonna let, we've got a bunch of commissioners who are waiting to speak, so we're gonna do that. Mr. McRae has made his point. Mr. Yaski, you're next.
Yes, Ms. Kaufman, remind me, this is a, the parking lot is attached to a service dealer, a Tesla service dealer?
That is correct. It's not, yes, it is, it's a, primarily in this building. I'd say it is 90% a service facility, and then there is a customer area that is available for consultation and leasing only.
Okay, the last I heard, Connecticut wasn't permitting Tesla to sell, but.
That is absolutely correct. There are no sales that. That is absolutely correct. There are no sales that occur here whatsoever.
Got it. And the service, is this um all used cars or are you bringing in new cars?
The service here is to pr- is provided for any Tesla. So if you were someone who owned or leased a used or a new Tesla, it could be serviced in this facility.
Are you planning to car carrier any of those vehicles into this site? Uh you know, typical car carriers, five, six, seven cars, for whatever reason, might come from another location.
I do not believe so. I will get that answer for you right now.
Okay, because that could be a problem for us on the parking lot, let's put it that way. Uh no, that's it. I was just curious to see um that they're servicing here but not selling. Got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next is Mr. Low.
Yeah, I I my comments uh were intended to come earlier, so we may be beyond this discussion. But just to, setting that historical record aside, we're evaluating this application today. Um and do our regula- regulations represent a suggestion that there be or a request um that the applicant comply with our landscaping uh regulations?
So let me answer you because I think what Ms. Kaufman, I'm gonna speak for you, Ms. Kaufman, what they are representing is we have this lot, we read your regulations, and we will make the lot less non-conforming than it is now. To which Nick and I have basically answered, if there's nothing stopping you, why not get closer to our regulations than what you are currently proposing? We understand it's an existing lot, but you are redoing it and you have plenty of parking to meet the Stanford requirements, so nothing is stopping you from getting closer to our regs.
Yeah, well, what what is represented here uh seems like um very small tokens toward addressing our concerns. And um, you know, knowing about what happened in nineteen sixty and since then i- is all very nice, but um I I I'd like to know specifically um whether they're in a position to follow uh our regulation, new regulations more closely. I don't regard putting six trees in the-
And that's, I think, that's what we're asking. So what we've said to Ms. Kaufman is, if you're not tight for parking, can you find some additional opportunities so you can get closer to our regs? We understand you have this existing use, but we don't see why you should re- redo all the striping and still have it non-conforming. Uh because you're conforming for the amount of parking, so we, that's exactly right. Totally agree with you, Mr. Low. That's what, you're right, we're-
This is, this is an opportunity to benefit the neighborhood, the town, the area-
Yep.
Everything. And I I would think uh the applicant would be look favorably upon that opportunity.
Yep.
If we hear you, we will take those into consideration and and push the thing out so that we can make it onto your uh next meeting to review that with you. But I do also want to address uh your question. From the historical records perspective, there is no directive. We were following prior conditions which required evergreen plantings along the perimeter.
Ms. Kaufman, excuse me, excuse me, I I pardon me, but I I heard this earlier. I mean, I understand-
I I was just responding to your question.
What the historical record is, okay, I got it. I'm I'm talking about the here and now today.
Okay, one of the other here and now things that we had addressed uh that we thought would also clean up the site, if you're looking at the southerly boundary of the site below the parking spaces in parcel three adjacent to Ladens Rock Road. There are exist, there's an existing to the left, Dan, with your arrow, please? And down in this area here. Um we have some uh, no, no, just just at the uh adjacent to those those southerly parking spaces, there is a a dense um area of parking there now. We're actually removing some of that asphalt and replanting that area and also introducing uh new trees and vegetation as well. Given the width of that area and also its visibility from the road, uh we also thought that that was an adequate enhancement to a park, to the parking lot plan. But we certainly can move some of those trees that you see there around and put them uh elsewhere, if that is what's desirable to the commission, of course, at the, with consultation with our client.
No, I don't think, I don't think that there's a suggestion here that we want you changing and moving uh those existing or proposed trees. We're adding, we're asking you to add trees into the midst of this parking area.
I understand.
To offset the heat island effect. Uh yeah, I mean, it it's the interior that we're focused on, not not, we don't want to uh steal from some other area to to do this. We're talking about adding.
Okay, uh Mr. LaRoe, did you want to add something?
Uh I did, Madam Chair. I just wanted to inform the commission that I had a conversation, face-to-face conversation with the fire marshal today about this particular project. Uh his only uh requirements, which I, or suggestions, I should say, which I believe the applicant is doing, uh would be to make sure that the northern gate um is not obstructed by any vehicles, which from the layout looks like that will be done. And that um there at at most, there is a knock box, which is a product that has a uh a universal key for fire uh and emergency services to get through um on it if there was going to be anything other than um just a gate. And um those were the only two things. I just wanted to share that.
Great. Um okay, so Ms. Kaufman, we will continue this then, and we will accommodate you as quickly as we can.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
A public comment I need to get.
Uh Madam Chair, one last question I have. Uh Ms. Kaufman, there is no lighting on the site?
There's no, well, there's no, there's there's no lighting, no new lighting on the site.
Well, okay, so-
Okay, so then, no new lighting. What lighting is out there now?
Yeah, talk about the regulations. Thank you, Nick, for that.
There is existing security lighting on the building. There are, and there are two pole lights that exist um on parcels two and three.
Pole lights, okay, I can't see that.
They're not, they're not a traditional pole light.
Okay, these are, uh they're on, looks like telephone poles in the middle?
That's correct.
Okay, but there's no new lighting beyond that?
Correct.
There will be no new lighting beyond that, ever?
There is no new lighting that's proposed at this time.
At this time, okay.
So, but then again, the question-
Lighting proposed, we're aware that they would have to come back to you with an application to the ARC.
And it's a, and it's a very sore point that Nick is, I'm so glad you raised it, Nick, because I I was, I wrote it down today and then forgot to ask. It's a sore point um in some of the car dealerships for the resi- anybody residential nearby. You don't have really residential uses that are rebutting. But it is a sore point that they put the security lights and they shine into people's bedrooms, and we got a couple of car dealers that uh but I I think it, if we, if you could also just tell us on your southern boundary, you don't have neighbors and to the east you have shopping center, to the north you have the post road.
That's correct.
Have Ladens Rock, you-
And the hotel above it.
And the hotel above it, and and also, if you recall from the lip plan, we just had up there, we have a twenty-five-foot buffer at the edge of the screening in between with actually very, very large, dense, mature trees. Um I have photos of that to share with you. So so in the event, you asked me that question about what the, what that southerly boundary looks like.
Okay, all right, so-
Follow up with staff on that, make sure you-
Let me just turn, does anybody from the public wish to speak on the Tesla application? Kindly raise your virtual hand. Anybody from the public, please raise your virtual hand? No, okay, so if um I'm not even gonna ask Patrick, I think if, don't give us any history when you come back, don't give us a long intro, just show us the landscape plan, what you've done.
Right to it. I'm sorry, I thought we wanted the history, since it was our first meeting, but I'm I'm always happy to fast track for you, Madam Chair, you know that.
Fast track for us, because we're very diligent, everybody reads everything, so by the time you get to us, um yeah, you know, uh if you get a chance to just tell us how many parking spaces you have relative to the Stanford requirement, we can ask them ourselves, but if you're talking to them anyway, I'm just curious, I'd like us-
I have that, I have that information. I can give it to you now. It's actually already in your packet. If you prefer, I can just give it to you for the next meeting.
I missed it. If it's in the packet, I'll find it. I missed it.
No problem. I I will send it directly to uh to-
Don't worry about it.
So it just, you have it right at your fingertips.
So uh we will continue this and we hope to see you at the next meeting.
I would be happy to be there, and I appreciate you putting us on first. We have our participants from multiple time zones, so this was very helpful.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Connet. All right, okay, so we're moving along. Our next application is uh number three, it's Jason L. and Kelly E. Kent Trustees and Overlook Preservation Corporation. This is for a final site plan. Um as you all remember, uh I know the commission remembers, this is two oh eight Overlook Drive and zero Overlook Drive. It's uh it was an open space behind the house and the addition of a retaining wall as well as landscaping. Please note that this is a must-aside item for tonight. Um Ms. Lovas, you may go ahead. I believe you had your landscape person with you?
Yes, Tom Tavella is here as well.
Yes, uh Mr. Tavella, if you would raise your hand, we'll bring you in, because you're the person we wanted to talk to. All right.
If you'd like, I could start out while we're letting him in.
All right, um please do.
Yeah, so obviously you guys know the background, but the owners remain uh very concerned about the amount of water coming off the hill towards the house. Uh in fact, they've had a conversation with a neighbor a few doors down with a very similar rear yard condition, and they sustained some significant water damage to their house. They since built a retaining wall and planted above it and have found it very successful. Um so our clients, after building their dream home, are just looking to protect that investment. The issue first came to our attention during construction when the contractor called us to discuss the amount of water coming off that hill, and we've tried to come up with the least impactful way to solve that issue. Uh Tony DeAndrea has agreed that the current plan is the least impactful to the open space, and that shifting the wall would require additional fill and impact that open space. Uh the current uh location of the wall would slow the off-site water at the entry point and leave the remaining space uh untouched uh topography-wise. And we will be planting in every area where there is dirt uh in the ledge to also help with that. But obviously, Tom Dovell is here, and he can kind of talk through those details with you guys.
Okay, um Nick, you had questions yesterday. Do you want to start?
Um Mr. Tavella, uh what's the current status of uh the open space and the conservation easement today? Is it, it's, it's, all the invasives are gone, but it's just exposed ledge?
Uh for the most part, yeah. There are some pockets of of soil as well.
Okay, uh staff, if you could bring up the the site section drawing uh that was prepared by uh uh the architectural team? Okay, so a- as I understand, I just want to make sure that I'm clear on this. The, what we're looking for is is soils stabilization and mitigation of runoff from up above the the hill.
Correct.
Okay, because it's actually, whatever it is, you have exposed ledge, it's it's draining down into uh the new foundation of the house.
Yep.
Okay. Um the site section that wa- they uh was provided um it's a little difficult to kind of place, but I think from the landscape plan, uh there's a set of stairs or uh that go up to uh an upper portion. And I guess this site section would be one of those two tall walls around the stairs, is that correct? Or maybe the lower one where there's a patio?
No, if I can speak on that, no.
Yes, please.
What what I'm reflecting in that site section is that there's obviously the small upper wall that we're proposing. But I show that larger wall as why we placed the proposed wall where we did. So if we moved that wall to the line of where the open space and the property uh meet, that's how tall it would have to be in order to hold back that water. Otherwise, you're still creating this, you know, essentially a slide where all the water is going to come down from above. So I was just trying to reflect for you guys to inform as to like, now we have to put a significant engineered wall at that location, and we have to fill. So the walls you're talking about for the stairs would then be left of the page, uh much farther left, where those people are standing. And you see, there's like some walls shown there on that far, far left.
Okay, so this is, this is not a proposal to build that wall?
No, 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 I'm just trying to show you our our thought process as to how we came up with that, because we really did investigate. How do we get this out of the open space? And how do we make it least impactful? And we just kept finding that it's it's worse, and so we really do want to meet the open space regulations and not touch this as much as possible.
Okay, I'd also like to note that there's a, there's a, an existing stone wall um that's attached to the ledge at that same location. So all we did was extend the existing wall to help us out with the establishment of vegetation to stop the runoff.
Right, so there's an extension of the existing rubble wall that's up there, and that'll actually have a little backfill behind it?
Yes.
And although, yeah, I was kind of, I was a little confused, so this wall that I'm seeing on the site section is not a proposed wall, it's just a place marker. That's how tall it would have to be-
Yes.
If it was, if it was on the line of the thing, but the walls that enclose the patio, the staircases, those are still, that's still in play, they're actually uh constructed or will be constructed?
They are constructed, yeah.
Okay. Now, behind those walls, is there enough uh room to uh add backfill and soils?
Yes.
Okay, with, okay, great.
It'll, it'll be all native materials. Uh we we showed the change-out um from the abreviate to the uh the native materials.
Okay, now, um you're trying to mitigate soils, uh erosion, water, that kind of thing? Okay, but I have an extensive, extensive landscape plan in the conservation easement and the open space.
Correct.
Okay, but what was there before was just kind of low ground cover invasive species, correct?
It was a hundred percent invasive species. It was tree of heaven, it was um uh English ivy um and a bunch of other like knotweed and things like that. It was all all really bad stuff.
Okay, and that's all gone. So I I think one of the things that I I'm um struggling with, I have walls that are pulling soil back. I have a new wall that's being constructed in an open space. And then I have an extensive, quite extensive landscape plan uh in in these areas, um almost like completely reforesting uh this open space plan with with all kinds of hedges and screens and things, that to me. Um it would seem that it would be a simpler solution that if you've got the walls, you can get soils behind the walls, is to get something in there that actually will stabilize the soils uh and soak up some of this rainwater that's coming down. And it's not an extensive landscape plan with all kinds of trees and screening and everything. Okay, because right now, it would seem, yes, you have exposed ledge, I can see where the water's coming through.
Yep.
But once you have these structures in and then something on top of that, it would seem to help mitigate a lot of this water getting down to the to the patio. And it's not, it's not huge trees, it's, can it be just low ground cover all over the whole, the area behind these walls? Because that, technically, that was there before, and there was no issue.
I I guess technically we could do native ground covers. Um however, we did want to factor in some of the habitat um-
Good, guys, that's a good point. Um so-
But the habitat didn't exist before. You had low invasive species, correct?
So what Nick is trying to help you with is the trade-off that you guys made in the material you submitted to us, where you said, gosh, you know that the invasives are so good at stopping erosion, and our our planner, our, one of our planners confirmed that. So he was trying to come up with a solution for you. What we could do, Nick, is why don't we word it that if ground cover is more helpful in certain areas, if native species ground cover is more helpful to controlling erosion, then the applicant, we're fine with the applicant doing that, but that the entire proposed landscaping plan should be reviewed with our staff. So if they want to go ahead with some ground cover, have them do it, but um that be, because we understand that they're trying to use it for erosion control.
Right, but I'm I'm at the top of the hill?
Yeah.
This is, this is the issue I'm having, at the top of the hill. Okay, uh on top of ledge, all this, I have this huge screen of stooges.
No, no, the stooges are gone.
They're gone.
Okay, then I'm looking at the wrong plant, but I'm telling you, what I, what I'm trying to say is that-
We were very upset.
An extensive landscape plan in the backyard of the house as opposed to an open area and a conservation easement that we would have assumed shouldn't have been touched. The invasives were taken out.
That's exactly what.
So here we are. But instead of putting back a ground cover, which was the invasive, I'm putting back an extensive landscape plan.
Yeah.
With, you know.
I, I think if you're looking at the wrong plan, Nick, we took the stooges out because remember.
I gotta find this right one.
Okay, so, and the problem with this is it's really hard to see, but they took the stooges out because we objected to the fact that they were using the open space for their private screening purposes. And that to us was not consistent with the open space purposes in the subdivision regulations.
Can I?
Yes.
What represents, currently, what represents or proposed screening along that, that open space? Well, it's, it's made up of, actually, there's a few large trees that we put in there. Can't remember off the top of my head, and I don't have a plan next to me. But I want to believe it's white oaks or something like that. And then we use some smaller flowering, flowering trees, which were shadlo and red bud. All the rest of the stuff is shrub material, and it's all native materials. It's some maxi rhododendrons, but then a lot of the other stuff is small. I'm just a little confused. And when did you put these in, these large oaks and the?
In the plan?
Pardon?
In the plan.
About two months ago?
No, because it was more recently that we objected to the stooges. I remember that meeting and it was.
Probably about a month, because I missed the last meeting.
You missed the last meeting, and you had done the landscape plan again, and the stooges were, yeah. Okay, so no stooges.
I, I just, I'm, I'm still not unclear. I'm sorry to.
Okay, go ahead.
These large, you said you put in several large trees, white oaks. When, when was that done?
Well, they haven't been installed yet. It's just.
It's not planted, it's in the plans. They revised, so we, we were talking shorthand, they revised the plans.
Correct.
Then Mr. Tavella missed a meeting. He had COVID?
Yep.
He missed a meeting, and we had been very concerned because Ms. Lovas represented that the applicants were eager to have more screening along their boundary in, along the open space boundary, and we said, not the purpose of open space to give privacy to, to block the, et cetera. So at this point, they've put in deciduous because we're trying to foster the local little animals and whatever you want to, okay. So now, as you look at erosion control and what works best, I think Nick was saying, hey, we're open to ground cover if that works for you guys. If there's something you think works better, that's fine. You know what we're looking for. I'm still, go ahead.
We approved, I mean, we're, we're good with these large oaks going into this open space?
The open space looks pretty bleak right now.
No, no, I just, yes or no?
Yeah, so the open space, I'm trying to, I'm scrolling through. You know what, Patrick, can you go to page maybe forty-one of the application? That shows you how bleak the open space is right now.
You're looking at pictures, Madam Chair?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then from there, you can scroll to back to where I think on page forty-four is the most recent. Oh, it just exploded on me. The most recent plan.
Forty-four is the most recent landscape plan.
Okay, so you see, this is a pretty bleak open space down there. Okay, then go to forty-four. Keep going. Okay, so here's the new landscape plan. I'm still super uncomfortable with the wall, but I, you know, I was hoping Nick could resolve the issue. I don't like the idea of the structure in there, but at least you've restored the open space and you're putting in native species. That's what I'm feeling better about. Does anybody else? Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, you know, the other reason, you know, we, we saw the existing wall there, and it just, when we started looking at cross-sections, it said, it just made sense. Let's just extend that out. It's gonna, it's gonna fit the site a lot better. And if you look at neighboring properties, they all have walls in about the same spot because they had water problems. So we kind of.
Yeah, I got it. I just.
But, but, but are there, are you all enhancing, enlarging this existing wall?
Yes, they're extending the wall.
Well, I know extending is, is, I think, sort of on a horizontal plane.
Correct.
Not vertically.
No, no, we're not, we're not making it taller in any way.
Keeping it the same height.
And, and that height is different across the terrain, perhaps?
It's varying from like two feet to maybe three feet at the moment.
Yeah.
So what we'd like to do, what I'd like to do is when you have it to final the landscape plan, that of course, our, one of our planners would give a sign off on it.
Okay.
Okay, and then you make the call here. Obviously, the less wall and the less height, you keep hearing us on it. It just, I understand the water issue. You did lose us a lot on the screening, on those screening goals you originally had. But the water issue is serious, and we understand that.
And, and we can use a combination of ground covers, but I do want to get some bigger material in that is going to absorb that water faster. Ground covers don't really suck up the water like a tree does.
Deep roots do, we know that. So we fully encourage, it's just, you know. That's the trade-off. It's the erosion issue versus the water absorption.
Yep.
We get it. Does anybody else on the commission have comments on this? Can we turn to the public? Does anybody in the public want to comment on the overlook application? All right, no comments from the public on this overlook application. Does anybody object to us closing this application at this time? Seeing no, no objection, this application is hereby closed. I had forgotten to announce that Mr. Wells is seated for Mr. Levy on this, so it's Albin, Mackry, Wells, Low and Yaski. Would the secretary be willing to make a motion?
Uh, yes. Okay. This is two oh eight and zero overlook drive application, PLPZ twenty twenty-four, two six three, final site plan. Applicants proposing landscaping improvements to the conservation easement C three area of parcel three R and the open space parcel, parcel P areas of parcel three R in accordance with the recorded declaration of conservation easements restrictions and the recorded declaration of open space restrictions for the approved subdivision. Whereas zoning issue comments on seven seventeen twenty-four indicating new issues, the proposal conservation issue comments nine twelve twenty-four indicating recommendations to the proposal and wetland station approval needs questionnaire dated six eleven twenty-four indicating no action required. Question finds that the applicant is requesting the landscape improvements to mitigate ongoing soils erosion control as a result of native species removal. Therefore, motion to approve noting the following. A continuation of the existing stone rubble wall can intrude in the open space parcel P. The new stone wall, rubble wall in parcel P should match the adjacent existing stone rubble wall. Let's see. Prior to zoning permit, the applicant just submitted revised landscape plan for staff review, indicating additional low root stabilizing native ground covers in lieu of additional shrubs or trees. Irrigation is prohibited in the open space area conservation easement, and a permanent stone demarcation of the open space area and conservation areas shall be installed. And all remaining conditions of the original subdivision approval shall be adhered to, and the applicant shall address any and all remaining staffing departmental issues.
An applicant shall review final site plan, shall obtain final landscape plan sign off from.
Staff, yeah, got that.
From staff.
Nick, can you reread that sentence regarding, you know, versus shrubs and trees, plantings versus shrubs and trees?
Okay, it should be, where did I have that there? Prior to zoning permit, the applicant shall submit a revised landscape plan for staff review indicating low root stabilizing native ground covers in lieu of additional shrubs and trees. That way, we were biasing more towards the low ground cover, like the invasives that were take out than actually additional very large trees or shrubs.
I guess I have a problem with that. I can see going slightly in that direction, but it seems to be either or. And I personally don't have an objection to large trees. They do absorb more water and provide habitat and also heat island effect and, and everything else. So I, I get directly want to do it, but this seems a little too absolute. Seems like no trees and no shrubs and all.
I didn't say, no, no, I don't think it's, I don't think it's no trees. I think as, as the chairwoman suggested, it's where they can get it in, in, in addition to what they have there. If there's can be more ground cover and maybe less tree, that would be best. That's how I interpreted what she was suggesting, but if you want to reword it in a different way, we can go ahead and do that.
Really, it's a question of the trade-off, as we were saying, that we would rather have deep-rooted trees wherever we can get them. On the other hand, we know that in some instances, the ground cover may be helpful to control erosion, which was your point, Mr. Mackry.
Right, and I think it's the issue of how much, how much soils are up on top of the ledge.
Yep.
That can support a tree, a shrub, as opposed to, you know, the ground cover, that, that kind of issue. It's basically what we're doing is stabilizing the soils, soaking up the water so it's not getting down to the site. A lot of different ways of doing that. It would seem that if it's actually all sitting on top of ledge, you want something that's actually is going to grow with the ledge as opposed to try to suffer with no, no dirt to grow in.
Maybe we could say something like, you know, the, the planning plan will include ground cover where appropriate, but, you know, not exclude.
Where necessary, yeah, where necessary
Yeah.
to enhance erosion control. And I, okay, and then Jackie, Jackie is going to sign off on it anyway, and she knows what we're trying to look for. Mr. Low, and so that's the motion as amended. Go ahead, Mr. Low.
That last comment by you is exactly what I was looking for, is that we have somebody on the staff, namely Jackie, who knows what we are looking for. And so, and we're not, what we're not looking for, notwithstanding, Arne's comments about trees are nice. We're not looking for a straight line of trees that are serving as explicitly a screen.
A screen. You know.
No abreviates, we got it.
And you know how, and not only that, but we were just uncomfortable with the goal that the open space was subservient to the, okay. Thank you, Mr. Low. Okay, so do I have a second for the motion as amended?
Second.
Mr. Wells has seconded. Mr. Low, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Yaski?
Aye.
Mr. Mackry?
Nay.
Mr. Wait, do you want to explain that?
No, I, I, as I see this whole, it's, we took, we took out the native species out, the invasive species of exposed ledge. I have a water problem now. I, I'm dealing with a water problem by putting back in not what was there, which is wrong, but actually something which is reforesting an open space, which is something I don't believe we should be doing. Open space is open space. Mother Nature is supposed to take it and do whatever she wants to do with it.
Yep, and I, I tell you, I've been sitting here thinking, I'm, I, I see your point, the precedent point. Mr. Wells, how do you vote?
Aye.
I'm also going to vote aye, but I, I see Mr. Nick's point, Mr. Nick, Mr. Mackry's point. It's really, it's a tough thing because, you know, someone else is going to want to come and put a shed in the open space because, you know, it does something, and it's the explanation of no. We're not going to make that mistake again. So, all right, the motion passes four one. And we're done with that. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Ms. Lovas.
Thank you for your time, commissioners. We appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, we now go to the public hearing. Mr. Bazili's on duty. Our first item in the public hearing is Carolyn and David Han. The applicant is SE minor. I think she's on the way in. All right, so the Carolyn and David Han for a final coastal site plan and special permit. This is to propose a change of use from residential to retail on the first floor and an office on the second floor where the parking requirements would increase per six one fifty-eight. This is at two fifty-seven Sound Beach Avenue in the LBR two, R twelve and coastal overlay zones as well as the AE zones. We only have to open this application tonight. Ms. Orsi, you heard an extensive discussion from us yesterday about the inadequacy of the, of the parking. We're familiar with the application. If you want to summarize it for us, but at the end of that, of all those questions, I think the thing for you to address at this point is whether you might revise the application itself to fit better with, to how the lot is laid out. But why don't we talk about what you heard and how you might address it?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. And if, I'm not sure who's in control of the promotions, but I believe Gigi Ma should also be listening in. If she can also be promoted, that would be appreciated.
Is Ms. Ma an engineer? I don't remember.
Ms. Ma is head of the, our planning department and project team.
All right.
Hey, how are you?
Hello.
Hello.
Okay, so which of you is going to be presenting?
Rachel will be presenting, and totally understood, Madam Chairman. We actually, I think Rachel listened to extensively, and we're happy to make modifications as, as you suggested.
Great, okay, so let's go through that, what you heard, what, what your client's willing to do, and then where we go from there.
Sounds great.
Ms. Orsi, if you would, go ahead.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Rachel Orsi from SE Minor on behalf of the applicant at two fifty-seven Sound Beach Avenue. It's great to see everyone tonight. Commissioners, as you know, we've been here before for this project at two fifty-seven Sound Beach Avenue twice already. This will be our third time. If you recall, our application tonight is for a change of use from residential to office and retail, and this property is located in LBR two. As mentioned, we've been before you twice. The first was for a pre-application for a change of use from to, to retail only. And then the second application was for a final site plan for change of use to school. In the context of putting together this application, we took into account your thoughts, comments, and suggestions from the prior two meetings as well from the briefing yesterday. And we believe we have a solution that optimizes the site's use while minimizing the impact on parking, as we understand that is the greatest concern for this site. So what we did this time is we looked at possible regulatory uses that the first and second floor can have. And on the second floor, we are proposing offices because that has the least parking demand and directly addresses your comments and concerns from the previous meetings. In addition, we also looked at what was possible on the first floor because direct office is not allowed in LBR two. So we went through the possible uses and what we ended, and we've ended up at retail on the first floor. Pat, I shared a presentation material just before the meeting. You wouldn't mind pulling that up? Thank you very much. So as mentioned, we went through about a dozen different uses and looked at what is best from a parking number perspective and what's most reasonable use for the property. So I can just go through a couple of things considered and why they were, in our opinion, not feasible. The first use possible for our site is animal grooming. I know there's already one in the neighborhood, and that'd be a lot of back and forth with, with people and animals back to our site. Another possible use is a dry cleaner, which, you know, has many chemicals, contaminants. I know there's already three in the neighborhood of old Greenwich. The next possible use is library, which we know the Perro Memorial Library is already an OG. The other use is a municipal use. The other use is a municipal use, which I'm not sure if the town is looking to acquire a new property. If so, let us know. The next possible use is a package store, which we don't believe alcohol sales next to a school are very ideal. Then there's the personal service establishment, which we did consider a potential viable use for this property, although we consider the parking demand up to six spaces as the parking for personal service is calculated by the amount of stations at the service establishment. So we're assuming with the floor plan, if you have three rooms, a chair per each, and then you need two parking spaces per chair. So we count that as up to six spaces. Another potential use in this zone is pharmacy, as you're all probably aware, there's a C V S right next door. Then we found retail, which is the currently proposed use for the first floor. We calculated the parking demand to be four point one three spaces, which was the least amount of parking we've found for any use available for the first floor in this property. And then additional uses which are permitted in L B R two zone, but we did not find feasible for our site, which was a restaurant, which we all know requires much parking, a post office, which there is one nearby over on Acadia Road. I believe there'd be a state purchase involved.
Ms. Orsi, Ms. Orsi, this is not, how do I put this? This is not our role to help you choose a use.
Understood.
All we can do is tell you that when we look at the one you've chosen, given the intensity of what you're putting into the site as you move from residential to commercial, we're not seeing it as working with those five spaces. That fifth space looks very tight and complicated. And we're not seeing that as working. One of the answers might be to reduce the intensity of the use, to go back to partial residential. There are a bunch of different options that you could discuss with Patrick, and that would be an appropriate step is, hey, go to the town planner and talk about what you've, what you've considered. Once you come before us, you come only on the application that you have before us. And so here's the application and here, here's how we would revise it based on your thinking. There's not enough parking. So what we're looking for is what about if you made it less intense so that four parking spaces could be sufficient? What if, what could you do? But I'm, your alternative at this point is the commission asks a lot of questions. You say, no, I want to stay with this. And then the commission votes, and I think it would behoove you if we could, if you could come back with something else. But it's not up to us to help you pick a use. We are not, we know squat about that, to be totally honest with you. I mean, we may think we're really smart, but that's not our thing. So Patrick, on the other hand, can tell you more. He can advise you on what he thinks would work. That's what he is, you know, as you know, he's heavily credentialed and he can help you with that. Patrick, I just totally threw you under the bus. So what I would suggest is that.
I think Chairman, I'm sure, and I think what we were trying to demonstrate here is that we've thought through all the potential uses. And I know this is our third time in front of you, not to ask you for a specific use, but to demonstrate the amount of due diligence we've done to see what we can make, you know, work. And we really are trying, we're trying our best. That's what it's supposed to demonstrate.
Understood. And that's great, understood. But at the same time, the one that you came in with didn't work. And so how do you do something that does work? We'd like to be supportive of use that works for the site. We understand that they don't want to do residential. But on the other hand, as we commented yesterday, we're seeing a lot of parking demand in Old Greenwich and we're uncomfortable with some of the stretching that has happened. I don't know how else to put it.
Understood.
And I, it's always hard to tell because people complain. Oh, I couldn't find a parking space right in front of the store I wanted to go to. Any other comments from the commission at this point? Okay. So what would you guys like to do? Do you want to, I made, if the commission doesn't have questions, you heard, you heard from them yesterday. They were very concerned about the parking not working. I think Ms. Jenkins, you mentioned that that fifth spot looked very awkward to you.
Yeah. And I think, Madam Chair, the other thing that concerned me was the, the apparent answer to the tightness of the parking was to reduce landscaping. And I was very distressed to see that it included removing screening between this property and the school. So I think to the extent that parking is an issue and you're trying to find adequate space, you have to consider the school to be one of your primary neighbors in terms of protecting the view. I don't think we want kids looking at car, car hoods. So to the extent that parking and landscaping can be developed together, I think that's also important in terms of being a good neighbor.
Mr. McRae?
I guess what we're looking for is kind of a reverse study. It's, it's available parking now, but has the actual use inside. That's what we're really looking for. And it's more of a study of a reconfiguration of the inside spaces to accommodate a use that can be served by just the available park, right? That's what we're really looking for. If we have finite parking on site, so whatever it happened, it needs to happen to the building. It needs to be fixed. So actually, whatever uses are in there only, you know, only is limited to the available parking outside. That's what I'm hearing we wanted to do. Is that correct?
Find something that works and we'll do what we can to assist with it, but find something that works in the site. We recognize it's a tough one, that it was residential and they don't want to have it be residential, but it's got to work. And at this point, it doesn't seem to, from what we heard, there were a lot of questions about the parking sufficiency. Anything else, Mr. McRae?
No, that's it.
All right. Anybody go ahead?
Point of clarification, Madam Chairman, you had mentioned that it didn't work previously. Do you mean the previous applications don't work? Or you're saying the current configuration?
This is a new, no, we can only look at the application before us. You mentioned that you had been before us previously. This application does not have sufficient parking or parking that works. Those five spaces look tight. And that was what the commission was saying yesterday. That was the key question. As you know, we don't make any decisions during the briefing. The question was, this parking is puzzling us. We're losing landscaping and the parking isn't working.
Right. Is there a parking slot spot that, and we'd love to hear, you know, we'd love to be in a position to address all of your comments the next time that we're here. We'd love to hear from any of the commissioners that, if for, if for any concerns, is there a parking number that you would like us to target so that we're, we're working backwards?
To meet the, to meet the regulations.
That's, you're not looking to make an exception.
We can't.
Understood.
I mean, we could, I suppose we could, there is to some extension. Here's the thing. If you're going to make, if you're going to reduce the requirement, you have to have a good reason for doing that. And we're not seeing that, given the business booming in Old Greenwich, there would be any reason to be doing that. Patrick, did you want to add something?
Yeah. I mean, I think just to talk about the facts, this is a conforming use right now, right? It's a residential reuse that has parking adequately for it. When you change the use, all those factors have to be considered. So the commission needs to be comfortable with the decision that what's, it's being converted to is not going to create or exacerbate a situation that either exists or doesn't exist. And that, that's sort of the, it's a, it's a roundabout way, I think, to answer the question, Gigi, is that what's being proposed and how it's going to function and how, you know, not just the flow of parking spaces, but the operation of the business too, I think, are going to be critical to helping understand if this is something that could fit in or if it needs to be, you know, reduced in some way or, you know, supplemented with another use to reduce the parking demand.
Okay, thank you.
And when you, so what you're proposing requires nine spaces. And you're giving us an iffy five.
If I can just real quick for the parking, I know it wasn't depicted on the parking plan, but I can say that that was reviewed by our engineering department, who used the program Auto Turn to make sure that the parking, the vehicles can actually fit in those spaces. I know they look tight, but I can, I can speak to that. That plan was prepared from an engineer and there is technically enough room for, for those five to be viable.
Of what size car?
The standard, I think it's a standard S V, the, the D P W manual recommends a standard size.
All right. Mr. Levy, then Ms. Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would say that we don't rely on something that doesn't give you the right result. Here it is obvious that you need to show exactly how it works. The fact that a, a program may have calculated something is not adequate. You have to show how it works. And in plan, there's no way to understand how it works. So we're not interested in what a program suggests.
Okay, Ms. Jenkins?
Yeah, I think Mr. Levy has just made, kind of made my point in terms of whatever, whatever the dimensions are, if it's going to be a difficult fifth park, you're not, no one, no one will go to the trouble of trying to squeeze into a spot if parking is tight. They're just not going to use it. So as Mr. Levy said, technically it works, but you're running a business. And if you're going to already be one, one space short of even five parking spaces, the technical answer is not going to tell your customer, oh yeah, you can, you can get between the building and the, and the, and the back stairs in the corner of the building. No one that I know will park under those circumstances, but Mr. Levy made my point. Thank you, Mr. Levy.
And Mr., yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, and we heard you, Mr. Levy, and I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name. But I think Rachel's point was not the, any program like engineers use AutoCAD for their design, they use TURN, but more so that an engineer who's focused on traffic on our, on our team and certifies this, an experienced engineer believes that it is possible. But given your comments, we'll certainly take that upon ourselves to take another look, to make sure that that's right, or if there, any, you know, if there's tightness or whatever, to be able to present a viable option.
And, and again, I think the concern here obviously is if there's a business in there, you want your tenant's business to be successful. And if parking becomes an issue, we're not helping anybody by saying, oh yeah, there's, there's an engineer who once said it would work fine.
Yeah, 100%. We hear you.
Mr. Levy, you want to add something?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to be perfectly clear that a diagram is, is not sufficient. You have to, it's not dimensions. It doesn't really meet the task of demonstrating how it works. So you, it really has to tell a story of how the cars enter, how they park and how they reverse out of there and exit. And, and a clear demonstration of how the, the building is accessed for fire and, and you know, that kind of stuff. So it requires a lot more than a, a single diagram. We're not looking for a diagram. We're looking for an engineered explanation. And I think that it requires more than just this one drawing.
Absolutely. And we intend to provide that. Okay, great.
And the other thing is that I, I think the simplest solution, if you, if, if the, the change of use is required to actually rent out the building is that what use, use, however much space will meet the demand for parking and decommission the other space. I mean, those are the kinds of, that's the kind of discerning kind of thought that we want to see here. So if, if you, if you only can use the first floor and that meets the demands for parking, then that's a way of, of telling us how this works. But to try to, you know, you, you can't put 10 pounds of, of potatoes in a five pound bag here. Okay?
Mr. McRae?
Ms. Orsi, I just want to make sure from your narrative, as we see it today, it's, it's office and retail use. You're calculating at seven and a half spaces, three and a half retail, four for the office. And you're actually looking for a modification waiver, modification of that.
So I can speak to that. We submitted a revised letter.
Four spaces for the office, four spaces for the, well, it rounds to nine spaces. It rounds to nine spaces, Mr. McRae.
That was a clerical mistake from the F A R.
Okay, so how many spaces?
They need nine spaces.
Existing of five, so we're requesting a waiver of four spaces.
Four, not two and a half. Okay. But you're, you're, you're requesting the modification for the six one fifty eight B thing. Okay.
Right. And we're saying, in a, our answer yesterday, what people were saying yesterday and we're repeating today is in a different situation, but given how tight the parking is becoming in Old Greenwich and where this is, it's a concern if we keep, if we approve something that doesn't, a new commercial use that doesn't have enough parking. Did you want to add something, Mr. McRae?
I, I think if anything, as I, as I see it, just, you know, it's, it's a business district. You know, there may be some, some other sites that have no parking whatsoever and they're all relying on the public parking.
But it's a residential use right now. We are adding to the business district and that's the decision we want to make. Yes, in fact, there are sites that don't have parking and yes, that's why we have a problem on Sound Beach Avenue, but this is currently a residential use, so they would be aggravating the situation and that's the concern. Mr. Lowe?
Well, to me, I don't, we seem to be focused a little bit too much on this. How, how or whether this fifth space could work. If it were a half a space, they haven't met this requirement. They'd, they'd met it by half.
Right.
You know, 50%. So it's, this is just, it, it, it doesn't work. So let, when you come back, please come back with something, not just addressing, well, we've moved a wall, now this fifth space works. You're, you're grossly under the requirement and that, that's, that's kind of it. As far as, I mean, we're beating a dead horse, but I, I hope you appreciate that we're not saying, oh, well, if you can just, you know, do something about that this face. No.
Well, they, if they could make it less, less intense. Okay.
Right.
Shall we turn quickly to public comment? Does anybody from the public wish to speak for this in regard to this application at two fifty seven Sound Beach Avenue? Please raise your virtual hand. Anybody from the public? Right. I'm going to ask Ms. Orsi Abalucia, one representing, there's no one. Would you rather we make a decision? Or do you want to leave it open and come back with changes?
I think we would like to leave it open. That way we can come back and hopefully address concerns.
So we will continue this application.
Thank you very much.
See you when you're ready. Thank you very much to both of you.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay. All righty. Our next application is Nightingale Veterinary Partners. And Mr. Tessie has raised his hand. And I don't know who Zach is. Is Zach one of the people working on the application?
It's not familiar to me, Madam Chair, so I'll let Mr. Tessie.
Let Mr. Tessie speak for himself.
Well, at least who was on his team for this.
Okay. We'll let you speak for yourself, Mr. Tessie. The next application is Nightingale Veterinary Partners for a final site plan and special permit to propose a change of use from medical office to a veterinary hospital facility. This would have surgery as well as an eye center with four doctors and 20 employees on site. The hours would be seven thirty a.m. to six thirty p.m. And the property is at 100 Putnam Green, also known as Western, five Western Junior Highway. It's in the R six zone.
Great.
So you have to.
Mr. Tessie, there's a Zach with a hand raised. Are they part of your?
Yeah, Zach, Zach is part of our team.
So we didn't talk about this yesterday. You're rezoning the, that portion of the R six?
No, we're not rezoning.
No, we're not rezoning. I'll, I'll
Okay.
Explain it. Well, I'll start out with that.
Okay, well, if, okay, we got it, I got it, we got lots of questions to ask you, so just go ahead and give it a quick zip and then we'll jump in.
Okay. First of all, thank you, uh, for hearing us this afternoon. Been a while since I made the afternoon call, so I'm happy. The, um, the application was brought to you as a pre-application two months ago, in August, and the commission asked us to focus in on certain areas, which makes sense in terms of impact of our use on our surrounding residential neighbors. And I think at the conclusion of the presentation, you should be comfortable. Specific to 100 Putnam Green, it was built originally, as I had indicated in my narrative, part, as part and parcel of the Putnam Green Presidential Community. That was built by then partnership of Seymour Schwartz and, and Ralph Schacter. You know, that family, obviously, has been before you on other projects also. But that building, 100 Putnam Green, was allowed to be built. It was the R6 zone at the time. I did not do the zoning at the time. It was done in the, in the seventies. May have been originally thought to be, which it was, part of the administration of Putnam Green. I may recall also, some of you, I do, that Weaver Shills was probably about a half a million, a million, half a mile away on Weaver Street, and that was also one of their projects. And I know that their, their management of those two projects worked out of that office. So that office has been legally noncon- legally blessed, interestingly, by the Planning and Zoning Commission at the time, illegally nonconforming, used as an office building since that time, and it's gone through a few owners. So that's the history of 100. We're not proposing to rezone it. We're not proposing essentially to reuse it in terms of the core use, which is as an office building in this, but in this case, a veterinary type of building, which is a use group, use group five use by the commission where a special permit would be, would be needed. But overall, it's a continuation, is a change of nonconforming use is what it really is under section 6141, where, as you know, a finding, as I stated a bit earlier, of the commission needs to be made that this proposed use won't be more detrimental or meaningfully detrimental to the character of the neighborhood or have material adverse impact to the, to the neighboring properties, which in this, in this case, is literally Putnam Green. On both, on the north side, the east side, and the south side. So that's the overall history of 100, what, Putnam Green.
Okay, so.
Building contains four, go ahead.
Go ahead. The building contains, go ahead.
14,500 square feet over two floors, primary, as we've indicated, and the uh, bill proposal is to use both of the floors for the two component uses. Our client is going, has a short slide presentation, is going to, I think it's going to be most helpful to you. It will take you through the uses, take you through the history of, of the, of the companies involved, and his experience in operating these type of facilities over, I believe, over two, for over two decades. And he can describe to you in relative detail how they envision, I, I call it the average day to be there in terms of, obviously, patients coming in with their owners.
Um, Mr. Zach, are you a, are you a vet?
I'm not. I'm actually a licensed technician.
Okay, so, but you've operated, you've had, had this kind of facility, and you've operated, and you've, okay, we've, there's a couple of question, I'm sorry, Patrick, you have your hand up?
Yeah, Zach, can I just have your last name for the record? Sorry.
Sorry, it's Leclerc.
Oh, yeah, yeah, would you put it, put it, I'm sorry, Mr. Bazili, I forgot to ask that.
I apologize. Just let me know.
Is that how you spell it?
Yes, it is.
Okay. All right. So, Mr. Bazili, you didn't even complain. You get a demerit for that. All right, um, we had a, did you, you listened in to our briefing session yesterday?
I listened to the briefing session. I've read your staff report.
Okay. Because we had a bunch of questions, and I think actually many of them, Mr. Leclerc will answer, and then I've got one for you, Mr. Tessie. First of all, yes, just on the use, without showing us the presentation, could you just talk about the difference between a treatment room and an examination room?
Absolutely. So an examination room or a consult room is where maybe you as a pet parent, and I don't know how many people on here have pets.
Doesn't matter. We learn whatever we need to learn. Go ahead.
Right, so that's the room that you would be going into with your pet. The doctor would be meeting with you in that room. Oftentimes, they'll do a physical exam or some diagnostic testing, minimal, and that's really where you'll have the conversation about what is actually happening with your pet and making the medical plan. So much more of a conversation is happening in that room.
Now, the treatment room, the, the pet parent, as you call them, does not accompany the animal, and you do not surgery, but?
In the treatment room, that's literally where they're receiving treatments. So that might be blood draws, that might be physical exams if a patient is post-operative, anything that would, bandage changes if the patient has to cast splints or a bandage of some kind. So any treatment, any actual medical treatment, will be taking place there.
Okay, next question that came up yesterday. I'm just trying to get through our list here.
Yeah.
You, you mentioned that you're not going to do kennel or boarding. However, you're doing surgery, some percent of your surgeries would not be, I suppose you call them ambulatory as well. Your, your pets would, your, your patients would overnight. If they were overnighting, they would be in crates or something at your facility, correct? Do you have a sense of what percent and what that would mean?
Correct. So it's specifically the Hospital for Veterinary Surgery, which would have patients who are staying overnight. So that's on the second floor. We do have beaches, kennels, and runs. A beach is basically an open, but basically a pony wall space, so an open kennel, so it's not completely confined, but it is enclosed, so to speak. And any patient that is staying overnight is monitored by a full team, so that would be a doctor, a technician, and an assistant. And that's part of the team that's listed in that full team list.
Um, a doctor, so you've got a vet?
Yep.
And, and who else?
A techni, or nurse.
A nurse and a tech or whatever.
And a nurse's assistant, yes.
Okay, so you've got three people that would overnight when you have patients.
Correct.
Okay. Do you have any sense of how many of your patient, how many patients you might have on average overnighting?
Usually between, I'd say, three and five.
All right, next question. You, you represented in your application that you would, the, the patients would all relieve themselves inside your building?
Correct. On the first floor of the building, we actually put in a patient walk area or a patient relief area. And that's because the majority of our patients post-operatively are not ambulatory, as you said, and require basically assistance. And so that room is built to basically be a place where they can alleviate themselves, relieve themselves. So astroturf, there's specific turfing that gets put in that allows us to keep a very clean and hygienic room, because we also have to be very mindful, these patients are post-operative, they do have wounds, and so that room does have to be able to be clean and sterilized.
When you do the eye center, a lot of these surgeries look like they're ambulatory. You would not take any of those animals outside either.
Uh, usually, they do not need to during their period of time. Those procedures are much shorter. They're with us for a much shorter period of time for those.
And how many patients do you expect to see a day in the facility?
So for the veterinary eye center specifically, if it's a surgical day, they're usually only seeing between two and five with those five patients, usually, some of the patients going home pretty quickly, very minor procedures. On a consult day, it might be around 20 patients that are booked for an appointment. Neither of these facilities is seeing any unscheduled appointments. These are all predetermined and scheduled appointments. The Hospital for Veterinary Surgery on a procedure day, similarly, probably between two and five surgical cases. On an appointment day, much less, probably closer to about eight.
Next question, just as an offshoot of that, you're by referral?
Referral only, yes.
So it's referral only, and we have another, Patrick, remind me of where we approved that. We have another veterinary referral that we just, that just opened on the post road. I can't remember what the.
It's not referral, it's a walk-in clinic, the VEG Center, that one.
Yep, so that's the, yeah, and that is a group that we will work, that we are very familiar with.
There's also a referral place that opened now. I can't remember where it is. Okay, go ahead. I thought we opened a referral place as well. Okay, so you're referral only, 20 to 30 patients a day on the, on the, on the days when you're not doing surgery, only three or five, including the eye surgeries a day when, now, and total employees on site?
Total employees is about 20, and that is not all at once. As you, as I explained, there's some that are there on the overnight, and it's shift. So there'll be some that come in in the morning, some that take over for the afternoon, depending on if they're there for appointments, surgical procedures, or for inpatient care.
Okay, now, staff math, Jackie, feel free to speak up, okay? Staff math, based on everything you've just heard, you still think the we're right in using the 44 spaces in total. It's, it's tight. You've got 20 employees that show up. And then.
Not, not at one time. Zach, how, how many would be there at one time?
It's probably about 12 on average employees would be there at any given time. Some will actually be commuting by train into the Greenwich Train Station. And additionally, the patients that are coming in, the are also at a much lower volume. So it's not like a general practitioner's office or an emergency clinic where it's unregulated.
Okay, all right. It would be helpful to us if we had a sense of how many trips per day the cars would make and how much parking you would use at any point in time. Mr. Lo, you're moving your finger like you're raising your hand? Or are you just thinking?
I'm just raising my finger, but thank you for calling on me. Just along these lines, when you are treating these patients during the day, can you give us a rough percentage of the incidents where the, the animal would have to stay there all day, occasioning more traffic at a pickup hour that might conflict with other congesting elements in the neighborhood?
Yeah, so we, we actually also structure all drop-offs and pickups as appointments. It's also not unregulated. A drop-off or a pickup is, at the same time, is also to some extent a consultation. The owner is speaking with the doctor or a technician at both intervals. And so those are highly regulated. So that is, it's not like everybody rushes to pick up.
So it's, it's staggered throughout the, the.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, correct. So if we have five patients who are dropped off in the morning, they would not, all five of those patients would not be arriving at the same time. They would be staying with us over the course of the day. If it's the Hospital for Veterinary Surgery, they had surgical procedures and they stayed with us overnight, and we're going home the next day. They might go home anywhere between maybe 11 a.m. and 6 p.m. or 5 p.m., but those would still be scheduled appointment slots, and it's not just a matter of.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Okay. Now, I've Mr. Tessie, I think this is a question for you. A sewer comments, the way that they're structured.
Yes.
You're, you have, we finally got to the bottom of it, and I understand it, you have a private sewer lateral.
Yes.
Nobody knows the condition of that lateral.
Um, I'm not so sure that's true, because Mr., Mr., um, Fenella, Hemant, sorry, must have reviewed over the last few years, some of the applications. We were involved, Mr. Bristow was involved with them for work done on the residential component. He would have brought that up if that was a concern. Now, we also have Mr., we, we also, I just want to interject that, we also have Mr. DeAndrea here, who's had some communication with, with Mr. uh, Feminella on the project and his sewer questions.
Okay, Patrick, Patrick communicated with Mr. Feminella several times today, as did Jackie. From, Patrick, correct me, but the understanding that we have is that he does not know the condition of the private line? Okay, so, well, here's the, the concern. Is there a way that you could give us information, you could get that, the CCTV inspection done ASAP on the private line because of your proximity to the wetland? You are so close to a wetland. And you don't know if that line is in good shape. And I think that's also in the best interest of Mr. Leclerc.
I'm happy, I'm happy that it's DeAndrea, go ahead.
Okay, and then the last part of that is your client, from what I'm reading, your client would be responsible for the repair of that line if it's leaking. Because it's a private line. The town is not responsible.
That is absolutely correct, and that, that, that's normal. Um, I think Mr. DeAndrea should just work with Mr. Feminella as to uh, what he specifically is looking for us, the camera. I don't know if they've had that conversation already, but that's a normal protocol.
Yeah, my concern is that their turnaround time, everybody's so backed up right now, that the turnaround time is slow. But what, what you've got, right now, Wetlands doesn't think there's a Wetlands issue. But we don't know if that sewer line's in good shape, because from what Mr. Feminella has told us, nobody's inspected it for a while. And, Mr. Leclerc, this is a concern to us, because it's not our first rodeo with bad sewer lines. So.
I think we usually, I think we usually use, Tony usually uses Highland Sewer, Highland, I don't know what to call sewer.
Yeah, no, it's Highland. It would be, it would be Highland. It's.
It would be Highland. I'm thinking, you're talking about running that line off the 100 Putnam Avenue, basically to get in, into, in a way, the distance. That's why I said maybe he works it out with Rich. What distance does he want us to get to? There could be a, there could be a, in, in the, in, in the residential community could be a specific manhole that he wants us to run to. Tony, and he can work it out, and they can arrange you get Highland in there and see what we can do.
Okay, Tony, yeah, Mr. DeAndrea, you can speak.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair. I would just reiterate what Mr. Tessie said. Normally, the sewer department asks for a tracing of the existing sewer lateral. It was only a few years ago when we updated the building and took care of the sewer behind the building. Recently, there was an inspection of the pump station, so that seems to be in good working order, so.
Oh, it has a pump station. See, we asked that question like four times today. Is it only a line? And everybody was like, yeah, it's only a line. So it has a pump station. Okay.
So that makes it a little bit different for everybody's concern. So the, the line behind the building was new. It went through the wetlands review when we did the work for the drainage in the, behind the building. And now we'll just prove or demonstrate that the pumps have been inspected and confirm where it actually discharges.
Could you do, what would you do, a dye test?
No, no.
Uh, Madam Chair, if I may, sewer division's actually, prior to building permit.
No, no.
Requesting, prior to building permit, is actually requesting a specific CCTV inspection.
No, no, you guys aren't following. You guys aren't following. That's not what I want. I want it now.
I know that, exactly.
I want it now.
What you want now, he's already, he's already, he's already stated what he, what he wants. You just want it now as opposed to before the building permit.
Exactly. And the reason is, wait, no, wait.
What you were asking.
Person talking, okay. So the reason we're asking now, Mr. DeAndrea and Mr. Tessie, is this. It's the wetland. And it protects Mr. Leclerc as well, because the last thing in the whole world that you want is to find out that your property is polluting the wetland. And now you have a mess on your hands. So we're, I'm asking for it now on the basis that we're the intersection, the only place where there's an intersection between Wetlands and the sewer folks, to make sure that it's clean. And Mr. DeAndrea, you can get that done, right, fairly quickly? If you have Highland, do it, and you can get Mr. Feminella to, I mean, even if Highland.
The process will be, they'll make another inspection of the sewer line within the property, from the manhole to the pump station, then we'll verify the discharge point for, to the satisfaction of the sewer department, and that should be fairly straightforward.
And, and the Wetlands folk. That's the biggest question that I got.
Would be involved in if it turned out that they needed to do some digging, but we already established that
Okay.
unnecessary five years ago when they renovated the building.
Okay, that would be, because we are, but your new use, from what I understand, and this is a question I didn't really get a chance to ask Mr. Leclerc yet, it does involve more sewer. it does involve more sewer use than the IVF would have, right?
Um, Mr. DeAndrea can answer that because he and Mr. Feminella talked about what they were going to use for standards.
Right, one of the, one of the issues that was raised was the fact that the building has pretty much been empty for over three years, so we don't have any current, you know, comparisons.
You don't have flows.
So what we've done is initially discussed how to extrapolate from the health code. Um, some of the health code for medical offices, um, allocates only point two gallons per day per square foot. So it's a very nominal volume. Can you apply that directly to a veterinary facility? And we'll deal more with, um, um, Mr. Leclerc on what exactly the consumption is on other similar facilities. So we'll have two means of comparison, and we'll discuss it with, with the sewer department and come to an understanding of, of, of volume.
This is fabulous, okay, this is, absolutely. Uh, Mr. Lowe and then Mr. McRae.
Uh, two things, on, on that, uh, along those lines, uh, given this, uh, dedicated indoor space, for these animals to, uh.
Relieve themselves.
Yes, um, the, where does that, uh, byproduct go? Is that, that does not go into the, uh, sewer, or it does?
The only thing that would be going down the sewer would be, um, urine.
Okay, well, that's something, and, um, also, uh, a different question. Um, with regard to the number of patients and the number of vehicles, um, it, uh, what would be the, uh, do you think that the expected traffic to this center will, I mean, are you, do you regard this as a, a regional facility? Um, and therefore, you're drawing from a, um, a market larger than the, uh, the, the town or the neighboring town or two?
Uh, so very good question, especially, you know, whenever you have a veterinary specialist, your goal and your hope is to establish relationships specifically within the community that you're building that practice in. So our goal is to really establish those relationships locally with the Greenwich General Practice Community as well as, you know, the veterinary, the veterinary emergency group as a referral base. Um, that being said, there, it could potentially be that there are referrals from outside of the direct community.
But i- is that, I don't know enough about, I don't know anything about it, uh, the, uh, is that sort of standard, uh, is it be sort of a standard model? Because I don't know how many facilities like yours, you know, what the radius would be between you and them.
Yeah, so there are not that many veterinary specialists, especially for ophthalmology and, um, boarded surgery. That being said, uh, regardless of where they're coming from, it's still, uh, scheduled and booked appointments, so it shouldn't impact the actual traffic flow based on where they're specifically coming from.
Does Cornell do, does Cornell do, um, ophthalmology?
Yes, Cornell, uh, in Stanford, Connecticut, I actually spent five years there, um, so they do have an ophthalmologist, and they also do have, um, surgery, the two surgeons, they're able to.
Okay, so the Wilton Eye Center is not the only one in Fairfield County right now, there's also Cornell then, since whenever they opened, what, ten years ago? Twelve years ago?
Correct, uh, she has been there for about eight years, yeah.
Okay, so you now have that, but, um, that, from what I knew, uh, Wilton fifteen years ago was about the only place in all of New, all of Lower New England.
Correct, so, uh, he was for a long time. Um, there's actually two ophthalmologists up in New Haven, uh, and additional one joining Norwalk.
So it's been growing?
Correct, as, as a field, we, there's more ophthalmologists coming to the Connecticut area, um.
So, the, um, referral veterinarian place in Norwalk also has an ophthalmologist then?
Uh, they will be starting, I believe.
Okay, so you have, we're looking at, to Mr. Lowe's question for regional, you're looking at facilities in Norwalk, um, both for surgery as well as ophthalmology for specialized surgery, um, Cornell has both as well.
Correct.
And then, um, Wilton still has the ophthalmology. Is there any other specialized surgery for, um, cats and dogs, which is your field, right?
Um, so surgery is often affiliated with a larger specialty hospital, so a lot of the multi-specialty, where there's an emergency room, a lot of times you'll find also surgeons. So we're unique in that we do not have an emergency room, we are not a twenty-four-hour patient facility, we do not have patients coming in at all hours of the night. Um, it's a very structured outpatient service, um, understanding that some of those patients will require.
And, and the reason we're asking you all this is we're trying to boil it down to, um, traffic. Because if someone is going to come down from far away, as people used to twenty years ago for ophthalmologists, they would have to stick around the entire day, they would be taking up your parking space maybe for more time. I think we've narrowed it down to most people are probably going to be making a relatively short trip, but I'd still love to see your parking, kind of what your parking use is going to be. Um, because, and just to help us, we've got to make the finding that it is not a more non-conforming use, that's what Mr. Tessie knows all about, that the first thing we then ask is what's the, the actual parking demand in one of those tables? Just reminding you, Mr.
I know, I, I was so proud of that table on that application. You rolled me down a little bit though on it, but I think Zach, we can work that out.
Yeah.
I think everything you provided, it was very good in, in terms of your operations, your typical day, I call it, as I started out. And so we can put that in a, a little bit of a chart form, since you, you.
Chart form, a little bit of a chart.
You go by appointments, and I, I think it's going to come out, because I was doing a simple math myself.
Yeah.
That, it looked like, you know, maybe two-thirds of the space in that, worst case, I was just doing the numbers that.
Yeah.
We'll work on that, and, Mr. Bristol, as you know, is my, uh, Excel man, so we'll, uh, we'll figure that.
All right, well, we'll teach you to do Excel one of these days. Mr. DeAndrea's going to work on the sewer with Highland. Um, and the parking demand, uh, you're not making any exterior changes?
Correct.
We would say that if you're going to do lighting and whatever, and, um, and signage, that you would eventually go to, to the sign.
Yeah, we've already, um, having heard you, we, we've already jumped the gun a little bit on that, we're filling out those applications.
No, that's totally good. Um, in fact, the A R C would love to see, see things sooner. Mr. McRae and then Mr. Levy.
Uh, I think my question had been answered, but Mr. Leclerc, the, the, the facility is limited to, uh, cats and dogs?
Yes.
Yes.
Dogs.
Okay, and just so I understand, uh, from what Mr. Lowe was talking about, the, the, uh, pet relief room is the dog walk on the first floor next to the surgery center entrance, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, it's a surgery center is the second floor, and that's where you enter?
The surgery center actually, uh, services clients predominantly on the third floor. Second floor and first floor are basically back of house or staff only.
Okay, maybe I'm looking at the wrong plan.
Well, you should only have.
There's a lot of.
Oh, sorry, uh, question of, uh, um.
Ask.
Pat, Patrick, or, where'd you go, Jack, Jackie, it, because DPW brought up Beta. Did, did this application get referred to Beta? Or is that just a note that they typically put in? Because I, we haven't seen anything, and they mentioned that, and I just wanted to clear the air on whether or not you're expecting Beta comments.
We are still waiting for Beta comments.
Which, so therefore, it would really help if we could give them your parking demand thing sooner rather than later, because Beta's going to ask that question, and then we'll sit at a meeting, and we'll ask you about it, and then it'll take another two weeks.
Yeah, no, exactly, that's exactly why I brought it up, because, because I wanted Beta to be able to see it sooner than later for that, thank you.
You have alleviated, uh, our concerns around the parking was how regional it's going to be. So one of the things is, is we've asked you, is maybe we just document where, um, the specialty centers already are. Uh, we spent a lot of time, um, Mr. Leclerc, just to give you perspective, we had an application for a human specialty facility, and we did the same thing. We looked at what the regional supply was to see what the incremental traffic that we would get from the entire region. And we ended up rejecting that application because we felt there was enough supply in the region that, one of the reasons is that there was plenty of supply in the region. Um, have we asked everything you, you guys had on your minds? All right, let me turn to the public for comment, does any, go, go ahead, Mr. Tessie.
No, I'm just going to make, uh, one other point on, on it, on the, um, on the parking, just because it's a, it's a one forty-one application, the original fourteen thousand square feet of, of residential, residential, I apologize.
Of, yeah, the office.
Of office space, when you compare it to our, our proposed use, on the one, you're comparing a one for, one space for every one hundred and fifty square feet for the office building. And we're, and we're proposing a use that technically, the technicalities of the regulations, but I think it's good for one forty-one.
Yeah.
One for two, which is a forty percent decre-.
Yeah.
Uh, decrease in regulatory demand, I'll call it.
Yeah, now, Mr. Leclerc isn't going to be so sure about that if he doesn't, you know, if he doesn't have enough parking. And he is probably comfortable that he's got enough parking, given the fact that he's got twenty people that aren't going to be there all the time, and then he's not going to be seeing more than twenty, thirty people a day, it kind of looks like it adds up.
Now, they took that, because this is a, he, just, just you understand, this is a lease situation. They're not going to be purchasing it, it is a lease situation, and they were very, uh, that's what was one of the attractions of the building, in that they had that adequate parking, and they could establish themselves there with a good identity serving the Greenwich community. So I wanted him to get up because he, he's just, he's just much, is glimmer a word? I don't know if glitter is a word, but you're much glimmer than I am.
We, um, one thing I will stress, um, Madam Chair, is that we are as, um, concerned, or our focus is on the client experience, which is part of that. And so one of the reasons that we're, you know, this building and this site had worked for us is because we're able to tailor that experience, which part of that is being able to access parking that is not obstructive, that is not a heavy flow, that is, um, you know, that is not our intention, our intention is to modify our workflows to be able to maintain that sense of calm from walking in the door all the way through the experience, and a lot of that starts with the.
So one quick question, speaking of all that, one quick question I wanted to ask you, that you're not proposing exterior modifications, but when you get a large patient that potentially needs unloading, y- you can accommodate that without adapting the existing building?
Yep, we're able to, we're able to bring in a patient of a.
Just grab, you grab, uh, you grab a stretcher and, and you just go and get the patient?
Correct, we bait, yeah, very similar to human medicine, we do have a gurney that is able to come out and retrieve the patient.
Okay, all right, any, any, before I try, okay, we're going to try again, so anybody who wishes to speak on the Nightingale Veterinary Partner application, this is at five Western Junior Highway, one hundred Putnam Green, and it is for a specialized veterinary surgery and examination center, as best I could put it. Any comments from the public, please raise your virtual hand. Nope, no comments from the public. Anything further from the commish? Nope, all right, so we leave you with that, uh, as soon as Mr. DeAndrea, I think your, your slow point's going to be Mr. DeAndrea getting a turnaround. Um, I don't mean to accuse Mr. DeAndrea, I just know that everybody's backed up, um, the construction demand is unabated.
Well, I'm sure he'll do his best, and we'll, we'll get that chart going this week.
Yeah, a highlight, I mean, the sewer companies are very responsive, so that, that would be good there, I don't think there is busy right now. The town hall is still very busy. Okay, so with that, we'll see you when you come back, um, thank you very much, and um, thank you for the excellent explanations. We did, we, we will read your presentation again.
Absolutely, thank you so much.
Thank you, thanks very much.
Good evening, thank you.
Alrighty.
Uh, get rid of me?
Oh, it would be a pleasure, Mr. Tessie, no, just kidding. All right, okay, uh, next application, uh, one hundred East Putnam. Uh, who's representing is Mr. Bauer, Bauer?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Bauer, if you would raise your virtual hand, hold on a sec, oh, there you are, you're in. Um, our next application is number six, it's a hundred East Putnam LLC, Refinal Coastal Site Plan and Special Permit. This is to change one non-conforming use to another at a hundred East Putnam, for those of you listening. It is, uh, the apartment building that is going up next to C V S in Cos Cob. At present, that, originally, that was going to be a bank on the ground floor, that is a non-conforming use in the zone, which is L B R two. It is now being proposed to go to, um, what they are calling a medical spa. Mr. Bauer, would you go ahead?
Yes, good evening, um, Eric Bauer on behalf of PAWS, uh, also, you should see in the list a, uh, Jasmine Pizimbono, uh, who is.
Ms. Pizimbono, if you would raise your hand, all right. And just accept the invite, there you go, great.
Okay, so, uh, Jasmine is the, uh, going to be the operator-owner of this facility, so if there's specific questions that I can't answer, we can defer to her. Um, so I was at the, uh, attended the briefing session yesterday, and I have to say, it was probably the most interesting one collectively in terms of what you were covering with birds and raptors and eyeball doctors for vets. It was, you know, wasn't the usual cut and dry, uh, kind of stuff we deal with, but anyhow. So, uh, I was there, I listened to comments and concerns, we, uh, regrouped as a team to be able to provide, uh, answers to you. And I wanted to just start by, uh, commenting on some of the, uh, concerns that were raised about maximum capacity, maximum use, turnover, the idea of people be waiting and waiting, um.
Not waiting and waiting, but just that if you have a ten-minute treatment, you want to have the next person out there in the waiting room ready to go.
Yes, so, um, we can, if I can defer briefly to that, uh, the chart, the service times and reset times, uh, I think.
Great chart, thank you very much for that.
Right, I thought so, not my work, they, it's from the group, but they, um, uh, what's helpful about that is just off the bat, or preamble, that all the appointments are, uh, fifteen minutes apart. So there's no, uh, back-to-back scheduling, and all of the, uh, patients or visitors coming in, it's strictly appointment only, so.
Okay, but just go for a second, if you have a treatment that only lasts ten minutes, and you've got ten minutes to re-prep the room, your next person better be out there waiting. You've made the appointments ten minutes apart, fifteen minutes apart, but you now, that person should be out waiting to come in bef, you know, your fifteen minutes is up.
Right, so.
Okay, so I make an appointment for one o'clock. That room is now ready for you to walk in at one twenty. If for, for the ten-minute treatment, so that's what we were trying to get to. Ms. Pizimbono was how much parking would you need? Because all we're looking for is, will your demand on the parking be the same amount of non-conformity that we have now for that? So it's just applying the zoning rules, and Mr. Bauer knows what we're trying to get to, is can we make a finding that this is no, is not a greater non-conformity?
Right, so the, um, so when we look at the chart, just first glance tells you if you add up the, um, seven different treatments that are there, their time, and then the time for, um, reset. The reset time per use, per single use, adds up to two point two hours of time that the rooms are going to be, um, actually not in use. Um, so that, uh, and then, of course, the scheduling of the appointments, the fifteen minutes, um.
Right, but if I have a one o'clock appointment for the cryotherapy, I'm out of there at one ten, and the room is ready at one twenty, so having the appointments be fifteen minutes apart means that hopefully, if your business is successful, you see someone every twenty minutes.
Exactly, so, um, the, as a practical matter, obviously, optimum capacity is practically never reached, but obviously, that would be the gold, and that's what you're planning for. So the, um, and all these people coming are not only appointments, but they're, uh, repeat users. So everybody has their own, you know, will know what's expected of them, the business certainly knows what they're expected to provide. Uh, if they have a problem with scheduling, the business is not going to be successful, and they're going to have to either expand, expand time between appointments, and we did discuss that, if it turns out.
Right.
There's a, a focus on more of the short term than the longer, that, that can be adjusted. So there's, there's definitely a self-regulating component here in terms of this being successful, it's not a doctor's office. It's not a doctor's office where you're going to wait as long as it takes with as many people in the waiting room to get in there. These are people who are doing it for their own convenience and personal need. So it, it has to be responsive. Parking wise, um, I think we're going to be fine on that. The, um.
Okay, so let's just do that quickly, the parking thing. So if you would tell us then what, the two things. Um, you're applying as a change to medical spa. From our understanding yesterday as we went through that, you need the nurse only for the IV drip. That is the only part that I'm seeing as medical. Um, I'm assuming that the injections are done by just a regular person or maybe a tech of some kind, um, but.
That would be the nurse, yes.
Okay, so you need the nurse. That's a clarification. You need the nurse for two of your rooms, the IV drip and the Vita shot. That makes you a medical spa in two of the treatment rooms. The rest of the treatment rooms would not be medical. They would be personal service in, as I'm seeing it, because they are not medical treatments. They don't require medical supervision. The, you know, the contrast therapy, now that we understand what it is, ma'am. That, you know, those things, those don't require medical supervision. So those would be straight personal service. So you're not proposing a, a medical spa per se. You are proposing something that has, uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight rooms, of which one room, possibly two, has a medical component.
Uh, Jasmine, did you want to comment?
So my question is just, can you calculate the parking to show us that it is not creating a greater non-conformity on the basis of personal service for six of the rooms, medical for two? Yes, ma'am, Ms. Pizimbono.
So the rooms are not being used for medical at all. The vitamin shots and the IV are being administered in the chairs in the nurses' station. So there, so no rooms are being used for medical. There are seven rooms and none are being used for medical.
There you go, Mr. Bauer. Now you know how to do your parking demand. So your personal service component is in the rooms and the two chairs are your medical spa and you figure that out on that. But the only part you have that's medical is that.
Right.
So when the, um, so what happened with sound, this isn't the first time the commission's been through this and.
No, but we've done it. The last time we did it, we had a higher amount of people with medical supervision. So it's a little different this time. You didn't have something like the contrast therapy, which is the sauna to the, to the, to the, to the bath. See how much we've learned?
Yeah, so.
Uh, Madam Chair, before we move on, I, I want to be clear. I want to understand this.
I'm not moving on. I'm stuck on this. The nurses' station. Yeah, go to the floor plan. Go to the floor plan. Somebody, can you flash up the floor plan? Yeah, yeah. So you see where those chairs are? Now I've lost it. Tanty, tanty, tant.
More to the beginning, I think.
Yeah, no, it's got the rooms labeled. Remember we've.
That's it. Nope, that was it.
Remember we were doing that yesterday?
Just had it. That's it.
I want to rotate. Hold on one second.
Yeah. So that's, that's the current plan, which as you discussed yesterday, also you noted that we did, uh, provide the second entrance in the rear so that it's fully ADA, uh, compliant. People don't have to walk all the way around to the front. Um, it's accessible directly, uh, from the, uh, parking structure and parking areas.
Mr. Laurel, if you can scroll right anywhere you had your cursor before. I just want to make sure. So on the right-hand side of the hallway, I have, uh, uh, offices labeled nurse. That's their office, but the actual injections are in a therapy on the other side that says therapy.
No.
Is that? No.
It's where it says nurse. That's what they just told us that we didn't know. Where it says nurse. Is that right, Ms. Pizimbono? You stop us and tell us if we're wrong.
Yeah, no, it's, it's where it says nurse.
Got it. See?
Okay. So what is the IV therapy then? Does that require a nurse to do?
Where you've got the three beds, you've got three beds for the IV or three chairs for the IV therapy? The nurse is doing those, right?
Correct.
Oh, this is a different layout than the one I have in my application. I'm looking at, uh, page thirty-five or forty-seven in the, in the package.
That was the, uh, earlier version, Madam Chair. This is the one that was submitted Friday.
Oh, we don't look at those, Patrick.
It was senior staff report, Madam Chair. It's on page, uh, I'll find it.
Okay, I'm looking at what's in my staff report and, okay, it's close enough. All right. So Ms. Pizimbono, your nurse comes across from her office and she does the IV therapy in those three beds in the IV therapy area.
Yes, their chairs, yes. And I, I, I think it's also important to note that the nurse is not going to be there for the operating hours. It's only going to be a very small portion. The, the IV therapy is only, I would say, twenty-five percent of the business.
Right, but it's, yeah, there you go. So, and so it's a lower, it, it's kind of a good thing for you that to say that, you know, it's whatever it is, the IV, because it's a lower parking demand for us. But Mr. Bauer knows what he has to do to do the parking calculation and that's what we're looking for is.
Yeah, I think we should.
Let's go to the numbers. Um, so if it was strictly, obviously a medical spa use, the medical would be six, um, per, uh, medical personnel and twenty-five percent extra. So that would be six or seven. When the, um, the Sound Beach Avenue project was, um, reviewed and approved, it was based, parking was based on what the demand, uh, was, uh, for the, uh, bank as an office use. So that was strictly a function of.
One fifty, or one fifty per one, yep.
Yep. So that came out with the, the ten. And so if we use, um, if we use that number, we're going to wind up, um, with a total of thirteen. If we just use it by proportionate square footage of what's the PAWS use versus the, uh, total commercial. We're like sixty percent of the bill of the commercial space versus forty. That would give us fourteen spaces. And, uh, so the most we would ever have, if every spot was occupied, would be the ten, uh, seven rooms, three, um, drips.
So let me read you what Pat has that you just paraphrased without knowing. The medical, you've got this, the medical spa occupies approximately sixty percent of the commercial floor area. We're saying no medical is lower. Okay?
It's five, it's actually five percent, like the.
Okay, but you, you, we're going to kind of fudge that a little bit because the people will stay longer for the IV. So more of your hours during the day, Mr. Bauer, you could look at it like that. But so section six one fifty-eight of the zoning regulations requires five spaces per medical employee plus the twenty-five percent for the additional. And you've, because you've got the one. So that's six point two five spaces. Okay? Then under six one fifty-eight for the old use, you would require thirteen spaces. So now the question is, it's not a hundred percent medical spa. It's only partially, how much of that, how, how close do you get to those thirteen spaces? And all we need to know is it's not a greater non-conformity and we don't have a table that says that right now.
Okay. So as I just referred back to the Sound Beach, that was a same kind of mixed use. Uh, some was medical personnel and some was, um, uh, personal service. The, the parking for that project where you found it not more detrimental was based on the, uh, maximum requirement of ten spaces based on the one for one fifty. So we're, we're consistent with that. Um.
Wait, wait, just, and wait just a second here. But we are learning as we're going with these uses. And we consulted recently with an, an outside attorney who reminded us that the commission is not obliged to repeat its mistakes. So what we want to do, Mary's laughing. It's her favorite line. She's put it up on her, on her office. Um, she's got a sign, right? You have a sign. You're not obliged to repeat the mistakes of the past. So if you would just take your space and say personal service for this and just see where you come out relative to the thirteen spaces and give us a little table?
All right. So what, what we're going to have is obviously a, a large number of gaps that aren't going to have all these rooms operating at the same time. So we already have two hours coming out per cycle. And so we're going to wind up with, uh, what would the maximum occupancy, um.
Personal service.
Estimating, not counting, not counting the IV and the, uh, the shots. So all those other, um, services, knowing the turnover time and your scheduling, what do you anticipate the worst case to be, um?
Just average demand. I mean, you're looking at your total demand and, um, I'm just.
Yeah, I mean, maximum capacity at the LA studios really never goes above sixty to seventy percent in, you know, a, a peak time. And we're talking like, so that chart that I also included was the average number of check-ins per hour in LA. And now, so that was five. So that means in LA, the maximum, the average number of people that are checking in per hour is five. And LA is a city of, you know, three point eight million people. Cos Cob has seven thousand people. So I, I really don't predict there's going to be.
But your draw, yeah, your draw, um, when you're looking at this site is hopefully a great more than, a great deal more than seven thousand people. You're drawing from the town of Greenwich, sixty-three thousand, Darien, twenty.
Well, I think there's enough competitors where I'm, I'm not.
Good point.
Yeah, I would like, yeah, that, that's a point.
All right. I got you. Yeah, that's your decision. Personal use, personal service, um, two spaces for each chair?
So these, yeah, so these aren't chairs. They're not barber shops. It's, it's a unique use. So we're being held to a new standard from the last approval. So I think we need to take, uh, uh, we need to take a fresh look and respect then the uniqueness of what the operation is.
And so then you would argue that maybe you only need, I mean, Patrick, jump in on this. But again, you're looking at, um, a narrow medical use. And, and we're trying to get our arms around this because we keep seeing these applications and we want to be fair in how we do it and we want to be smart in how we do it. It's not.
Fourteen, we have fourteen spaces. Um, you're, you're allocating six as if it was a medical and yet we know actually what it will be, looking at the floor plan and the usage. So then is there going to be seven that would then assume, aside from the medical, that there would be every one of the rooms used, um, simultaneously back to back.
Ms. Pizimbono just said you're not doing the medical a hundred percent of the time.
Yeah, so that's even less people in the building. So there's more parking.
Show us, yeah, so just show us that it's not more non-conforming.
Well, I think we know that the, the bank was going to generate, uh, thirteen. We have fourteen and we're saying that it's not going to even reach the thirteen, that we've got a buffer, um, built in there. And that's, I thought when going over the numbers and the, the scheduling, um, with Patrick Laurel, I thought we were, we had things covered arithmetically, given this.
Yeah, but we're difficult, you know?
So.
All right. Patrick has his hand up. I'm, I know Ms. Pizimbono, did you want to add something or did you just not lower your hand?
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
I'll lower it for you. Don't worry. Um, Patrick, did you want to say something?
Madam Chair, you asked a question about the, the, the uses. I, I think, um, well, I think the medical as a, as a concept in the regulations is that, you know, really handle doctor's offices with turnover and people in the waiting room. Um, so i- if we're going to do that way, I think we, with this, with the IV stations, I think we have to understand that the other spaces are really not that high turnover and the, the two, two to one, as the, you mentioned with the chairs. And then that's nail salons, that's barber shops.
Yeah, that's why I think a little bit of flexibility there, I think is good. And then, uh, Mr. Bauer, our bad. We define medical spa in six, five. We don't define the parking demand for even a medical spa. So there you are using our regular general practitioners parking demand. And you know that they don't think like Ms. Pizimbona and they just have everybody sit in the waiting room for eight hours.
Oh, exactly. So that's what I'm saying. Well, this is obviously way less than that. We're kind of forced to pick from A and B. But, um, and what the point we're trying to stress here is that this is, there's no way it's going to be full lock. The only way it could be a problem and even not a problem would be is if every room was full constantly and the drips and the shots were going. And the, the spacing between them even accommodates that. So aside from the fact that with this reset time, we know that there's going to be huge unavailability of a lot of these rooms throughout the day. So I, I think it, it works. So.
So let's just get it done quickly. We just get a table. I mean, you, you guys know where we're going and we're trying, we understand that this is a high-demand kind of a thing right now. We, we've been seeing a lot of these applications. So just show us that it's not more non-conforming. Patrick, did you want to add something else and then?
I did, Madam Chair, and I don't want to, um, drag this on, but the, the, the table of check-ins, um, Ms. Pizimbono that you, you mentioned, could you explain that? Because I, I, I'm not sure. I'm not sure I understand what, what that's representing. So I'll probably put it up, but, um, that's this colored document, right?
Yeah, so this is just the number of check-ins per hour in LA. So, you know, at nine AM on a Sunday, there's seven point two. So like, we're looking at the average for the week. So that means like the average number of check-ins per hour is five point one nine.
So, uh, on this, at this facility, how many rooms, is it similar in size to what we have here?
It actually, it has two more rooms than what I'm proposing.
So just taking the noon hour, that would mean that, uh, on Sunday, there were ten, whatever, ten and a half people checking in for fourteen rooms or whatever it is, eleven rooms. Um, and then presumably all the other rooms are vacant at that time. Or I guess my question is when seven people come in, is that because there's seven spaces available or are they waiting?
Remember this is appointment-based only. There's no like walk-ins. So it would be all appointments for the different rooms.
And do you have the same spacing, the fifteen minutes in between here or do you have a?
Yeah, it's, it's a corporate requirement. So everyone has the same spacing.
Okay. Thank you.
So remember this is, this is LA where, you know, I, I mean, I love Cos Cob, but it's not a booming metropolis where there is enough, you know, traffic like Los Angeles.
And they, they do have, I mean, they, this is turning out local business, local business retail. The number of facilities, um, that you were concerned about proliferation is, seems to be working per village. Um, there's one in downtown Greenwich, Glenville, um, one in Old Greenwich, one in Riverside, which is more, more medical oriented. But, um, again, there's, it was, I think you made the comment, Margarita, that the, uh, Madam Chair, I'm sorry. The, um, uh, the banks, you know, we had the proliferation with them. First, there were seven gas stations in Cos Cob. Then there were seven banks in Cos Cob. Those are all, uh, self-adjusting, uh, to it. So, um, making it work is Jasmine's, um, key to being, to staying in business. And, uh, so she's confident that that's going to work and she's going to do what has to be done. So, uh, are you saying you're going to not be able to vote tonight on this based on needing to see a chart?
Well, I'd like to be able, I'd like to have something in the record that definitely shows that we're not creating a greater non-conformity. Mr. Wells? I mean, that's my personal view. I can ask the commission how they feel.
Well, I'm not seated on this, but I definitely like the chart and, uh, I don't have no, any familiarity with the, uh, business that was referenced repeatedly at Sound Beach Avenue. Uh, but my question was, how many patients are in the sauna contrast room? Is it just, is it just one or how many at any one time?
It could be one or two.
Okay, so tubes a max?
We figured that out.
Well, there was, we're up to, you were up to ten or fifteen at one point, so.
No, no, we figured that out after the, I figured that, I figured that out afterwards because one person could be in the sauna and the other one per person's in the tub and then they change places.
Right. Like, it's usually a couple driving together. So less, even less.
Oh, interesting.
Okay.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay.
And then in response, I'm sorry, if I could just respond back to, uh, Mr. Mr. Wells. The, the Sound Beach that we think that, that we were referring to, um, was at, um, uh, one, uh, was it one forty-six, one forty-eight Sound Beach Ave? It's in the shopping center that has the restaurant there, the social and.
And the Old Greenwich Social? Remember, we did that recent, I'll tell you what, I'll remind you of it. Arn, it was the one with the heads, head something spa, head something treatment. And Mary was asking what the head treatment was and they explained it to us. And she was very nice to us because she knew we were just not versed in this. So.
So that was a change in use, a change in use of a bank, pre-existing non-conforming bank use swapped to a similar kind of health spa, but with a, a medical component.
Let me tell you, just for clarity.
Yes.
Why I'm drawing a distinction at this site. Why I'm drawing a distinction at this site, because I should have said this earlier. You are on a site that is assumed to be, that is mixed use and has only required the dwelling units to have one parking space either, because it is mixed use. And what that means, traditionally, it was assumed that it was a nine to five, that the commercial was a nine to five use where everybody would go home then at five o'clock and there would be no demand on weekends for the commercial use. If there was, there would be some Saturday demand potentially when the residents of the building might be out. And that's why mixed use, only one per dwelling unit parking works because the commercial demand isn't there when you have the residential demand. What I'm trying to get to is that's the basic assumption of your mixed use approval that you are dealing with here. Then Mr. Low raises probably the best thing he's said since he's been on the commission, maybe. Yesterday, he says.
Boys.
Why? Why do we not? The Birds was the best part? Yeah, he was good with the Eagles. So um, why do we not have use group four in the LBR two? Well, because use group four assumes a whole bunch of people coming at the same time. Now, we look at this use you're proposing and it isn't doing that. It doesn't have a hundred people arriving at the same time like a church. So it could work, it, it, it should work. But then the question is, you've only required one space per unit in the residential part of this project. And therefore, are you, are you putting a strain on that by, with a commercial use that exists longer hours?
So the answer to that is, there's um, all mixed use projects that have been through the commission over many years. There's never been a prohibition of weekend or nighttime um, retail commercial use. So that, that works.
Again, it's been because nobody has ever proposed a non-conforming use for the zone. This is a non-conforming use group for use, or at least part of it is. So just, that's where I'm coming from, is trying to get our arms around. We understand that there's demand for this kind of business. We're not trying to put obstacles in your way. We're just trying to make sure it works.
Okay, um.
And so just as soon as you've got that done, Patrick will accommodate you.
Was there consensus with the group that we have to postpone?
Did anybody, okay, does it, not postpone. Um, this is, anybody, if, would anybody look up? I, I have no problem if people would like to seat it on this application or the regulars. Does anybody want to go ahead and make a decision tonight? Okay.
No.
Right, I'm, I'm, they want to see the numbers.
Okay, so.
It's two weeks, it's two weeks. It might, I mean, just, he'll make you early.
Okay, so while we're here though, let's just quick wrap up, make sure that it's not any other outstanding things. Um.
Yes, we, Mr. McRae wants to talk about the windows.
Okay, oh, okay.
Well, you wanted to talk about the windows yesterday.
Yeah, I think, I think it's been resolved. I think the only.
You're happy.
The only question I would have, in the IV treatment, um, it's a doorway that's being, I guess, locked up. Um, I would assume there's some kind of a treatment going in front of that, like the curtain that separates that. Can you maybe explain what's happening with that, with that particular uh, area?
Yes, originally, there, there were both doors, side by side entrance.
Yeah.
The potential retail space. So the one on the left is going to be fixed. So there's not going to be a handle or a latch or anything. So you come into the main um, reception area.
Right.
Or come through the back. And the, uh, there is uh, shown uh, on the plan, a quote curtain. But that's really to separate the people from uh, the patient from the waiting area and people coming in and about. So that um, wall is not proposed to be screened off. Yeah, so you got the little arrow.
Yeah.
And then forth, yes. So that would be just to, to give that little section privacy from the rest of the uh, the operation. But those um, those, otherwise those windows would be open. Um, I think Pat or somebody talked yesterday about how that we're at the, the end of the building going into a um, a steep slope with a bunch of trees. So it's not, not really a walk-by um, place, but um, and, and I think it was important that it was noted yesterday also that, you know, the regulations speak to a retail presence by having um storefront windows uh, available for uh, display. So I think clearly the CBS thing is a total uh, different situation. Um, and this would actually be products and uh, probably more visible than they would be uh, if there was a dress or something hanging in the window. The bank, the banks don't have money hanging in the window, so.
It's really too bad, isn't it?
So, so the display, you have display on both sides, that's greatly appreciated. And then the one that's being locked up um, actually is a view into the IV therapy. There's no covering anything. That's just clear glass like the other door. Is that correct?
Yes, that's, yeah, we're not gonna, um, it actually came up when these concerns were first raised. Um, certain people, we were saying as observers, well, you know, just show it's all open and then do what everybody else does and put up the film, um, you know, once you're in. But that, that was immediately dismissed as being just plain wrong. And uh, and so they actually were creative about this display solution. And there'll be no signage. There'll be um, no, it's, the lighting is only indirect so that you can see it. That's not going to stay on at night. So there's no advertising other than uh, than the products.
Okay, great, thank you.
And did you get the neighbor support letters? Um, we had two. Okay, good. So those are local people, been around a long time and for their two cents, think it's compatible uh, with the neighborhood. Um, sewer, we submitted a letter um, just confirming that in Rich's comments, the part to be done under um, P and Z review was to agree to the um sewer conditions. So that's in your file sent to Rich. I don't know if you had time to send back to Patrick, but it's, it's definitely committed to as part of our record. Um, let's see.
And you, and, and you got the, you, you did, you did do the sewer letter. I forgot to check.
No, that's what Mr. Uh, Brower's referring to. We did get.
I just, the way you, he said it.
And then, no, Mr. Brower, I did not get a response from Sewer Division, but um, you know, receipt is typically all we need.
Yep, so, so I think that's good. So if we're good on other things, then we'll provide a chart that will um, address parking demand, uh, overlapping use, whatever, um, availability, timeouts, et cetera. So that's what you're looking for.
And, and also think about in the future, as we get these kinds of things, I think we need to put in a regulation for I don't even know what we call it. But we need to have a regulation that lays out how we would require parking. Because it's, we're struggling, we're, we're kind of bridging uses right now. This isn't the medical use. This isn't where you go and you see the doctor because you got a sore throat. It just isn't. It's a very different kind of appointment. You're, you know, you've just, you're boom, boom, boom. It's service oriented. All of that, it's very different. And I, I think we really need to put this on our list of how we require parking for it. So I'm sorry, Ms. Pizinbona, we're finding our way with this type of application still.
Okay, so yes, and the, the complexity is based on different lengths of services being what percent of the business, how much is open to it. So it is, it's not just, I understand your point, so.
And, and as long as you can get to what your parking demand is and that your basic parking demand, this is how we calculated it. And it isn't, but it's not just medical, that's all. Okay.
So can we um, get that to you right away and be on at the next meeting?
He's nodding. He'll say anything right now.
Anything to get you out of here. No, yes.
We promise.
I think, I think we have things, if we have things by the middle of next week, um, there shouldn't be an issue, so.
Okay.
Yeah, and it should be quick.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you, ma'am. We'll see you soon.
Okay, great, thanks.
All right, um, Mr. Bazili. Do you mind going home?
Not at all, thank you.
Assuming you're not there now, right?
No, it's what I always say to, it's just this weird thing. Okay. No, no, don't, don't, don't say that out loud, because now the next person will talk for eight hours.
Shortest for me, anyway.
Well, the next person has twenty minutes.
All right, and you're going to discipline them. Bye-bye, Mr. Bazili, see you soon.
Bye, see you then.
All right, um, now we go to the discussion items of which we have one. And we're hoping to see the applicant this time.
I see uh.
I see the neighbors.
Pulapu, Pulapu, I'm sorry, I'm going to butcher this name before I get it right.
Um, Madam Jenkins?
Oh.
I see Richard Reed has his hand up. Um, Ms. Pulapu, if you would raise your hand so we can promote you?
Yeah, Shiva Kumar.
I'm not seeing her because I can't open the whole list here. Um.
Uh, she's the last on the list alphabetically.
Oh, I got it. And then there she is. Okay, are you trying as well?
I am. Just uh, if you receive the promotion request, please accept and we can.
She's rejoining, she's on her way in.
Oh, good.
Yay. All right. Or he, sorry, sir. Uh, just unmute, please, sir. Our next application is a discussion item. Uh, it's Shiva Pulapu for a pre-application review pursuant to section six thirteen through six seventeen uh, to construct a new main residence at the rear of the existing structure and subsequent conversion of the existing structure into an accessory dwelling unit on a property at two sixty Palmer Hill Road in the R twenty zone. Uh, go ahead, Mr. Pulapu. Um, if you want to start, we will surely interrupt you. We try to finish in twenty minutes, so we will surely interrupt you and give you lots of, I, lots of comments. Go ahead.
Sure, I'll try to finish it before twenty minutes. Uh, so first off, I sincerely want to apologize for not being uh, presented the October first meeting. Uh, clearly there was a miscommunication and we were not aware our application was uh, on the agenda on the October first. Uh, we are really sorry, me and my wife. Um, and uh, I also greatly appreciate uh, um, value the planning and joining commission's time, as well as that of our neighbors who attended the previous meeting. So with that said, uh, Madam Chair, if you can, please go to my documentation page number twelve. Um, if you can share that, uh, if you don't mind. Uh, page number twelve, yes. Yeah, so before I uh, explain the challenges we are running into, I want to kind of describe the property. A unique situation we are in with this property. As you can see uh, on this, uh, we have a couple of challenges here. One of that is uh, the plot to shape, which is not uniform, uh, it's a irregularly shaped plot. Um, towards the north, uh, on the Palmer Hill, uh, is slightly highly uh, elevated as we come down to the south side of uh, uh, the plot, which is on the Florence side, it's a, it's a lower elevation. There's a topology is a challenge and also uh, elevation is one challenge. And uh, and also obviously, the top, uh, the plot to shape presents a uh, uh, number of challenges to us. So what we're trying to do here is we're trying to work and make the best use of our property or the plot and create a nice, uh, beautiful home here for our uh, uh, family, uh, and also our extended family or in-laws. So that was our original intent. So we, we had a plan. The original plan was to extend the existing house that you see in the front. Um, uh, that rectangular, not exactly rectangular, that, I don't know, can share my, how do I point something here? Uh, the, yeah, the existing structure, we, we were originally planning to extend the existing structure as step one. And the step two, we wanted to build out a small accessory dwelling unit for our parents at the rear um, rear of the property, far south end on the Florence Street. So the, the Florence, the, the far end of the Florence Street, uh, that was our original plan, uh, which uh, which aligns with the town's goal of encouraging uh, diverse housing opportunities, particularly for the elderly folks like our parents and my in-laws. So that was, that was our original intent. And we had our architect, uh, builder, an extension to the existing one. And, and also he actually built out a, an ADU plan and design um, to, to actually create this in the far south end of the property. So when we had that thing, we started uh, actually thinking about the logistics in that we started thinking about uh, execution of this thing, right? That's when we encountered some challenges. One, I'm going to actually um, uh.
Actually, so um, sir, since that the objective here is for us to just give you the, the big picture feedback, you didn't listen at all to uh, when we reviewed your application yesterday, right?
No, I was not on it.
Okay, so I, um, uh, what I'd like to do is is just come back to, to um, having the commission, is to let the commission give you some input on how they're seeing the application right now so that you could address how you might want to move forward.
Sure.
Um, one of the, this regulation that you're applying under uh, although we are encouraging homeowners to provide additional housing opportunities, we are looking at the same time to preserve the architectural scale.
Absolutely.
And characteristics of it looking like single-family residential neighborhoods. And I'm going to let the commission now comment on what their thoughts are on your application. Who would like to go first? Madam Jenkins.
Yes, uh, good evening and thank you for your pre-application. The obvious concern is that when you have two significant um, property, uh, two significant structures on a single property, that it begins to look like a multifamily zone and it's a single-family zone. So, and I'm sure you're now very familiar with six ninety-nine, probably as familiar as I am.
Yeah, I did it many times, yeah.
Well, no matter how many times you read it, it, it'll, it'll come up a different way. Um, the, the concern obviously would be that when you've completed the plan as you proposed it, you're going to have a significant house in the middle of the property. Uh, and what amounts to another what could look like an independent structure at the front of the property. And you're, the difficulty here is that you're on a corner lot. If you had a lot on the street where you would have a house in front and an ADU in back from the streetscape, it would obviously look like a one-family house with something in the back, a garage or an apartment or something.
Yeah, that's another challenge we have, being on the corner lot, the streets on both sides, that's one deserved boundaries we have. Yeah, please continue.
And I think, I think the concern obviously is that in adding an ADU under these circumstances, it can't affect the character of the neighborhood or the appearance of a single-family neighborhood, single-family residence neighborhood. Um, and I think particularly if, if you're looking to provide for extended family, which I think is wonderful. One of the things you might consider, and again, we're not supposed to give you advice, but as someone who wrote six ninety-nine, the other thing you might do is if you're going to put up a new structure, is have an internal ADU. So you have a single structure. It's going to be larger. You have a little more, a little more uh, kind of room in an internal than an external ADU. But somebody driving by is going to see one structure on the corner property. So it will look, there's a lot less risk of creating what looks like a two, two individual.
Absolutely, yes.
And so, again, the concern is, how does it look? You don't have a building behind a building because you'd have the corner lot, which is, in this case, it's a disadvantage. You also have, you have a curb, you have, you have two curb cuts, one on Palmer Hill and one on Florence Road, which also adds to the perception that it's two independent family houses on a single residence lot. So again, that, you know, you're dealing with, with what you perceive as a difficult lot. And we have to tell you that there are circumstances that make it kind of more risky to look like two structures on a single-family residence than it would if it were a different lot. So again, one possibility of what you want is an ADU is your new building have an internal ADU within that single building. That means you would have to demolish the existing house completely rather than reduce it in size. So again, it's the appearance in the neighborhood that is of concern here.
Well, yeah, uh, thank you so much, ma'am. Thank you for your feedback. Uh, I do want to do actually color a couple of things here. Um, we did think about uh, putting an internal ADU. Uh, it's just that uh, uh, it is, it will be okay for my parents, but for my in-laws, they are still in their mid sixties. And my mother-in-law, she thought she would prefer a, a separate kitchen. And they may come down from India and stay here for six.
And sir, I, I saw, I'm sorry. And sir, I, I saw, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you, but we're not permitted to kind of take that into account in terms of how.
No, no, but actually they can have a separate kitchen. If the ADU can have a kitchen, if it's in the same building. So if you make an apartment in the house, within the same house, you can, but, um, you can have a kitchen for it. If you're gonna have two sets of in-laws at the house, you're now dealing.
Uh, uh, Madame Chair, uh, mostly, most of the times my mom, my, my in-laws may be staying here with us. Um, yeah.
We don't want you to have three kitchens, okay?
No, 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 no.
But if you build an apartment within your, uh, add an apartment to your existing house, that can have a kitchen. The ADU can have a kitchen.
Wonderful. Yeah, it's good to know. Actually, that I did not know previously. Uh, so the, uh, the other reason, um, the other reason was, uh, I want to actually respond to, uh, Mary's comments on, um, two, uh, structures, right? They're not as similar in size, obviously, because the one is a thirty-seven point five feet height. Uh, the new construction and the existing one is like, uh, I think not more than ten feet, right? Uh, that is in terms of, uh, the height of the buildings, right? Plus, the, the, uh, ADU is a one-fourth of the main, uh, structure. The main structure will be around the four thousand square footage. And the ADU will be less than thousand. So I don't think they are similar in size. Uh, right, that's one thing. And also, I wanted to call out, uh, something else, uh. The, the ADU looks like a subordinate to the main structure because the, that's, uh, that's what my architect tried to actually depict that in the picture, like in one of the document. I think, uh, slide number thirteen, when you actually look up the property from the front elevation, you'll see only one, um, main door. You may not see the second main door. From the front elevation, it appears and it looks like a one, uh, single unit. Because, uh, there's a big structure in the behind and, uh, and the front elevation is fine. So, yeah, so if you look at this, from this, it looks like, uh, one structure. Right? And, uh, the only difference is like on the side elevation from the Florence Street, it may look like a two buildings, but the, the beauty of that is, uh, the street level is, uh, is a much lower to the property, um, uh, level. And also we have, uh, a nice, uh, piece shielding the, uh, view from the street. So there is that natural, uh, blocking from the street that, uh, that also helps, uh, kind of, uh, make it look like, uh, you know, like a single unit. Uh, so that is one clarification I wanted to make. And, uh, in addition to the aesthetics and the look and feel, right, and we have some challenges for the, uh, with the, you know, building, uh, uh, building, um, an interior or, uh, like, uh, uh, ADU or maybe creating a separated ADU on the south, the farther end of south side, the challenges are, uh, a- as follows. The one other is, uh, renovating existing home. The thing is, we need to move out of the property for almost a year, right? That's gonna put a, uh, financial burden on, on us, right? And, uh, translate to most likely one year of, uh, rentum. And, uh, and also this would add additional financial strain and disrupt our children's schooling. Both of our kids go to, um, Greenwich schools. And they have two, uh, boys. And, uh, during the construction time, because we have to move out, there will be a lot of, uh, strain on us and on the kids as well. And also, um, as I mentioned previously, we were thinking of putting this ADU in the back of the property. When we do that, when we, um, gone with the original plan, uh, one, it costs, uh, additional money to put a, an additional ADU. And also it presents a lot of environmental challenges as well. For example, putting a new ADU in the back of the property involves cutting the trees on the, on the south end of the property on the Florence Street. And it also creates a more impervious area, right? Because we need to put a complete slab and, uh, that actually, uh, disrupts the current, uh, you know, like, uh, environmental ecosystem. Because we need to put up this thing. So, and that, that's for those reasons, we thought like, maybe let's revise this plan. And, uh, and live in the current property, right? So while we are building all this, uh, new building in the back, that actually helps us, uh, uh, you know, save a lot of money. And also we can actually oversee the construction project when we're on, uh, onsite. And also, um, and we thought like then instead of creating a new, um, uh, a new ADU, we, we, we thought we would actually convert this, uh, existing, uh, you know, um, existing houses and ADU. So, so the, the, it's, uh, I see a number of benefits, uh, and I'm gonna pause after this thing.
Okay, good. Um, so let's just go ahead, Mary, if you would go ahead and respond.
No, I, I was just going to, to thank you for that explanation, but I, we have two architects on the commission and I think they'd like to comment, so I'm going to finish up.
Okay, um, Mr. McRae, if you would go ahead.
Yes, just, I, I wanna clarify from the narrative, uh, you received a variance for street-side, um, uh, yards for the existing house in addition to the existing house, that's correct?
Correct, sir, yeah.
Okay, but you have no variance or you haven't applied for any variance for the proposed new house?
No, um, uh, that's another request I have in my, uh, pre-prol application. I wanted to, uh, apply the same, uh, uh, or leverage the same variance for this new structure.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's, don't, don't even go down that road because it's not possible.
In other words, you only get the variance for a very specific thing and you gotta go back for something different. Go ahead, Mr. McRae, that was not your.
Um, if you're going to be building the brand-new home, as you have proposed, uh, everything that you said about the disturbance and the slab and all that stuff will come to fruition. You will actually take the trees out. You will actually be disrupting the site. Um, your hardship of topography, um, I'm having a hard time to, uh, uh, envision, but that's not my, uh, bailiwick. The reduction of the existing residents down to a thousand square feet needs to be verified. Uh, as I run the numbers and as I see the plan, you need to modify the front structure. It's more significantly than what you have proposed. Uh, you need, um, also, when it comes to an ADU and, and as I think I would perceive the ADU, if you have a primary structure, okay, the detached ADU, um, as you have it, is subservient to the primary structure, which will be brand-new, but behind it. And in this case, actually, you're in the, in front of it. Um, that needs to be rethought. Um, your thought on actually, uh, being able to stay in the house during construction can be accommodated. Okay? During permitting process to stay in the house for the new ones being built. But you can stay in it and once it's done, build the ADU behind the house as it should be. And tear the existing house down afterwards. That can be accommodated. It might be bet your best bet.
Okay.
The, um, uh, the views that you were talking about actually from Florence actually are, are, are quite, uh, uh, i- i- they're interesting because actually you'd never see as, as the drawings, as the drawings show, you would never really see that. Uh, you'd have to be farther down the hill and high in the air. So the, the height of the building, the new building would actually receive much, much taller than what, uh, is being presented there. Um, I think actually, we should going back and actually understanding, um, I think probably the design intent of a detached ADU was something that actually would be either one, an existing, uh, accessory building that's being added to or accessory building that's actually behind and significantly smaller than the, uh, primary structure that's existing. In a sense, what I'm seeing here is actually a backwards ADU application. Uh, you know, it's a new house and then ADU as opposed to existing house, then new ADU. Thank you.
And, and, and the fact that it looks like all one house in the architectural rendering.
It'll never be perceived that. It'll be actually perceived as two separate structure.
It's gonna look like two, and I've learned that very painfully over time. They show us a design and Nick and Peter Levy go, oh, that, that's, you're losing the depth in those designs. Mr. Levy, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Madame Chair. Uh, it, it's a, uh, interesting application, but I think that, uh, we, there is some, uh, requisites here that have to be, uh, a little bit more, uh, uh, kept in mind by the applicant. I think that, uh, fellow commissioners have done an excellent job of, of putting forth how to best manage this application.
Correct.
Uh, and, and I think it's very, uh, very well done. Um, I, and I just would like to emphasize that the configuration is not something that meets, uh, the existing character of the neighborhood. Uh, which is something which is, uh, a, a fundamental issue for us. So, um, the, the architecture of the old versus the new is an issue. So your, your thinking, which is very rational, is also, is subject to the idea that, uh, what the old versus the new is going to reveal the differences between them. So one will not, one will perceive that, that they are different and separate. Um, and so, uh, the, the more traditional, uh, idea, the conceptual, traditional idea of, uh, of this ADU being, uh, subservient and behind is a much straightforward, more straightforward and simpler concept to, to, for us to get our heads around.
Correct.
And that's what we're looking for. Uh, if you were going to try to pursue this further, you'd have to make, uh, much more accommodations to, uh, siding it and, and differently and, uh, uh, working on the, uh, architectural language and trying to meld the two. Uh, anything can be done if you want to, um, meet the task, but I think that it's better to go more straightforward, simpler route of looking at the existing fabric of, um, the neighborhood and, and meeting that.
Got it, got it, yeah. No, I, I really appreciate, uh, if I may make a comment here, um, uh, thank you so much, uh, for the comment on the variance for this new building and, uh, uh, Nick, we do not go that route, uh, if that is, uh, your recommendation. So secondly, um, like I mentioned previously, our original intent was to actually build out this, uh, ADU in the back of the property after we build out this, uh, main structure, right? And, uh, like, uh, that was our original intent. And also I read the documentation and they said the ADU should be in the rear side of the property, right? And the rear side meaning, like I said, a farther south end of the property. By doing that, one, there is one disadvantage, not one disadvantage, like two disadvantages. One is that, one of that is, uh, uh, I'll be creating a more impervious area, right? Because I'll have to demolish the existing structure, right? There is, there is a cost and also build out this thing, new thing, uh, on the back, there's a cost involved. And also it is not to me like, uh, uh, environmentally friendly, right? Because, uh, uh, I need to, I may need to cut some trees and, uh, and, uh, and things of the, so, uh, uh, so then, then I thought maybe, well, why do we do this thing? You know, why do we, uh, why don't we preserve the original structure? And to give it like a facelift, right? And that the look and feel of that, uh, existing structure will be aligned to the new structure. Obviously, we would use, like you said, sir, um, use the same siding and the same, uh, material and everything as it, but they both, uh, look harmoniously, uh, like as a composite structure. Because obviously we'll be, after the original structure is built in the back and we'll use the same material to kind of, uh, you know, like, uh, renovate the existing one. So in terms of, uh, uh, aesthetics and, uh, consistency on the, um, on the Palmer Hill neighborhood, I think it will be consistent to me. Honestly, it is my honest opinion. Also, I spoke to a couple of guys on the Palmer Hill and, uh, I mean, they, they did not really, I mean, they said, I mean, that's fine. I mean, they did not. As long as, because, but you think of it like this, right? I mean, right now, this building, this structure is very old structure, built in nineteen fifties or something. It looks so, uh, sloppy and, uh, and what we're trying to do here is we're trying to put a lot of money and, uh, our effort into making this, uh, look, uh, prettier, right? I mean, I understand that, uh, when you make it a prettier, like this, a new structure, it's very, uh, ADU in the front, uh, it's very hard to get our head around on that because the tradition is done in the past.
But, but we're struggling. Um, Mr. Leroy, then Mr. Low, Mr. Wells, and Mr. Levy. And then we're gonna go to public comment after that because the public's got its hands up.
Madame Chair, I'm happy to be last if, if the commission wants to ask.
All right, Mr. Low. You're muted. Nevermore.
All right, I, I rarely mute myself, so I. Um, I, you know, it just occurs to me, although this ADU as proposed may be smaller, it does not appear accessory because it is in the primary position in the front of the house. So I, I mean, it, it just does not, it, it sort of belies the word accessory. You're looking at this and you're wondering, what is that thing behind it? And why is it there? So the, the spirit of the, uh, ADU, um, i- is really not met with this design. Um, and I, I think that's what we're all saying. I, but it just occurs to me, if you just think of the word accessory and you look at something that's, oh, it's in the front, you're, no, that's the house. What's that thing behind it anyway? I, I don't mean to beat a dead horse, but it's just a nuance.
Mr. Wells.
Uh, quickly, I just wanna build on an idea that, that Nick proposed and a variation of it, and that is, why not move your existing house to the rear? And, uh, either the, before or after you build your new house. Or, you, to make it easier, leave it there, build your new house and then move your existing house to the rear. And, you know, reduce it either before or after, particularly if you're just putting a slab on it. That's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you, yeah, yeah.
Mr. Levy.
Uh, thank you, Madame Chair. Uh, eh, in, in light of, um, trying to figure out the right configuration, I mean, it, you, you could make this idea work. But it would mean reciting, um, and, uh, changing the, the curb cuts. So if, just to give you an idea, if you, if you kept this configuration, but you, um, uh, entered the property from, uh, where the new house is. And then, then, then you, um, add that, a, 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 a driveway that ran off of that to the existing building and, and the corner is now all landscaped in. So it's now like the rear of the building. And it's, it's, uh, it's, uh, no longer, uh, really a corner lot. It's, it's, uh, it's, it's, it's access from the other road.
Correct.
Uh, you know, now, now you're working with this idea where you can be, uh, where you can still live there and accommodate, uh, this new configuration for the street.
Correct.
By, by, by quartering off, um, the, the, uh, the corner with landscaping, so it's not, uh, uh, very, uh, visible. And then as, as a result, the, the new, um, uh, the new building becomes prominent.
Correct, yeah.
So there are things you can do, but it's just, just, eh, eh, but i- in the context of thinking about this in terms of how, uh, the neighborhood, uh, does work, where an accessory building is something which is, um, uh, is really op- operates and functions as an accessory visually and, uh, and, and, uh, operationally.
Yes.
Uh, that, so I just wanted to mention that it's, it's not like this couldn't work somehow. But it would mean that you would have the, that you would still have to reimagine and refashion the, the, the property and the landscape.
No, absolutely. I love this idea. Uh, thank you so much. And, uh, that's one, uh, idea our architect also recommended. Uh, if, uh, if, uh.
Um, um, there's still a couple of people waiting to speak, sir. I'm sorry. Um, you, you like, you like Mr. Levy's idea. Okay, you know, we try to keep these a little shorter than it's been so far, so I'm just trying to shorten you up. Mr. McRae, did you wanna add something?
Yes, this will be very brief. Um, I think actually taking, having your design team, looking at, uh, your neighbor, two fifty-six Palmer Hill, uh, for program. That building, as I'm seeing it here in front of me, seems to be the same building that you have in the front there, but actually expanded and added two. And I think actually it would probably accommodate all of your wishes in terms of a larger building and an ADU. You have a ranch building at two fifty-six, it was a ranch. They added a second floor and extension out the back. That may be your best solution. I recommend that your design team probably take a look at that and that might be um, a good viable option for you.
Mr. LaRoe, are you ready to go now?
Uh, I am, and I I know this is something that's been talked, but I just like to hammer home that the the regulation does speak to a a point of the ADU being secondary in character to the single or proposed single-family dwelling. So I just, if if that is taken, if that's the first thing that's taken from this conversation, I think it's important. I would also add, and I think Mrs. Jenkins was trying to point this, curb cuts, um, I I don't believe they're um, going to be permitted to access the ADU. I think it has to be for the house and off of that. So um, you may need to rethink that design. Uh, Mr. McRae did mention about the, you, you know, there is a way to live in the house and build next to it. So if you, if that was your concern, I just want to make sure that that, that it, that is a viable option. Um, and not having to keep the house afterwards is is okay. It can all happen simultaneously. Just a clarifying point on the variances, it's unique circumstance for the property itself and the circumstances. So uh, because you may have gotten a variance for certain aspects to do things on another uh, building on the property, I would not um, assume that you would be able to get it for a new house. So um, just, that's just fair warning. Uh, if you, if you want to proceed, obviously it's your right. But that's, that's the general gist. Um, and I just, as a note, looking at the floor area numbers that your architect provided, I would be very surprised if those are accurate to the way that we calculate floor area here in the town of Greenwich. Um, I think the way that the existing house is being renovated probably is going to end up being larger than a thousand square feet as suggested. I also think the house you're, you're proposing may be larger than what's permitted in the zone. So um, if your architect has not spoken to the zoning enforcement staff and understanding how those are all um, addressed and regulated, um, I would recommend doing that in the, in the near future because um, you don't want to get too far down in the design and find out that you're going to be over by several thousand square feet. So that's just a a word to the wise.
Thank you.
All right. We're going to go to public comment now. Mr. Vomvolakis, you would be first, followed by Richard Reed and then Ellen Reed and then Ralph Longo. Uh, Mr. Vomvolakis, go ahead.
Thank you very much. Um, I I appreciate the service you do for this town and it's been an interesting couple of sessions to watch what you actually do. And I appreciate it. I think everyone appreciates what you do for this town. So thank you. Um, with the homeowner moved next door. You're welcome. When the homeowner moved next door, um, I tried to help him as a good neighbor. He was interested in building a single-family home. I refer to him people that he may be using, he might use. He told me that he needs a variance for a single-family home. Being the nice neighbor, good neighbor, none, actually, none of us opposed it. We would, we would prefer to see a single home being built there and something updated. I was not told that he was going to also apply for an ADU. Um, and relative to the variance that was granted, uh, in my opinion, there's no topographic issue with the property at all. There is no streams, there's no rivers, there's no ledge. It's not a perfect rectangle, um, but it's had a house there for over sixty years. And the homeowner mentioned that he's just going to expand the house and build out back. And none of us uh, wanted to object to that. But but after reviewing these new plans, um, I think what, regardless if the ADU is in front or in back of the home, since this is a corner lot, there is no chance that it could be subordinate to the main structure. I read Greenwich Code ninety-nine municipal code and it states twice that the ADU must clearly be incidental and secondary. Um, these plans right here, the ADUs in the front of the home that he intends on building. In my opinion, even if you put the ADU in the back of the home, since it is a corner lot, there is no amount of landscaping that's going to block this off. And the reality is, it's going to ruin the character of the neighborhood. Um, it's supposed to be an accessory unit. It'll be prominent and not subordinate. Uh, in these plans, he has two driveways, one driveway for the main house and one driveway for the ADU. You could see it's a corner lot. It looks like two different homes. Uh, if you're walking up Palmer Hill Road, you're going to see the ADU. If you walk down Florence, I'm the neighbor, right? I'm a two sixty-two Palmer, so I'm right next door. If you're right, if you walk down Florence, you're going to see an accessory dwelling unit in back of this house. Uh, there is absolutely no way to couch this. I understand if the house is not a corner house, you know, possibly uh, you can put something in the back that's truly accessory. Um, but I told the homeowner, he has a a chance, if he wants to bring his in-laws, that he can just expand the house, it does, and create something in his home, single-family home, that would accommodate that. And I'm going to further discuss uh, Greenwich Municipal Code six ninety-nine, that this, either way, if the ADU is in the front or the back, it does not preserve the architectural scale and physical characteristics of the town's single-family homes. It's going to change the entire neighborhood. Nothing in the neighborhood is similar to what is proposed, even if the ADU is front or back. I also want to refer to six nine nine three L, which says that there's no ADU shall be permitted if it's non-conforming. Now, he's asking for a variance on a property. That it's going to be non-conforming based on the fact that it goes beyond the boundaries of his property lines. Um, there should no, no variance should be issued because there is no hardship. The homeowner is creating his own hardship at this point. Uh, there's nothing on this property that you could say, well, I can't build a single-family house because you know, there's a river or lake or a rock ledge, or I can't break the rock. There's nothing like that. This lot is while not completely rectangular, I would say it's pretty close. It's not, as they would say, it's not a slice of pizza where it goes back in 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 the back. It's pretty close to rectangular.
And Mr. Vomvolakis, I'm sorry, we tried to limit these to three minutes and we forgot to tell you, you're, you're close to five at this point.
All right. I I just got thirty seconds left, if that's okay.
Okay, sure. Go ahead.
Um, this proposal flies into the face of the spirit of the law. Uh, the homes, the home that would be built with the ADU in the front or the back is not harmonious with the neighborhood. And it should be disallowed. And there should be no grievance because, excuse me, no, no.
Variance.
Variance, excuse me, wrong, wrong, wrong.
Okay.
That was, that was earlier today. There should be no um, variance because um, there's nothing wrong with the property and the homeowner is creating his own hardship.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Reed is next and Mr. Reed, please do limit to three minutes. Uh, we forgot to tell Mr. Vomvolakis. Go ahead, Mr. Reed.
Madam Chair, just sorry, for our point of clarity, the, we're not discussing a variance here. The word, this is not the board for that. So uh, I know it was in the materials, but that would be a different uh, board, different hearing, different circumstances. So um, just for everybody who's listening, that's not that's not something that this commission can handle. So.
Okay, Mr. Reed, followed by Ellen Reed, followed by Ralph Longo. And again, you're not, they're not seeking a variance from us. It is a pre-application. Go ahead, Mr. Reed.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, my name is Richard Reed. I live at one sixteen Florence Road, which is essentially next door. There's a driveway to a back house, but I'm essentially right next door. After sitting through the October first meeting for over seven hours in today's meeting, I have a whole new appreciation for the time and the hard work that the commission puts in. And I want to thank you all for your dedication and allowing the community to participate in this process. Um, specifically regarding two sixty Palmer Hill, as others have stated on the commission and and John Vomvolakis, this proposal is not in the spirit of Greenwich Municipal Code six ninety-nine and does not meet the specific legal requirements of that regulation. The existing structure, which the owner is proposing to turn into an ADU, is a sixteen hundred and twenty-six square foot, single-family home, four-bedroom, two-car attached garage. And he's not changing the shape or size of this building. He is closing off spaces, removing windows and calling a room a screened-in porch. And that does not change the overall size and scope of the dwelling and does not seem to me to meet the one thousand square foot AD requirement for the zone. This proposed ADU structure is not incidental to the proposed house. It is prominent and it has been the main residence for decades. And it will clearly appear that there are two separate dwellings on the lot. There will be two homes, two entrances, two driveways, one of which requires a new curb cut, which has already been mentioned. The owner is essentially splitting the lot and building two homes under the guise of the ADU rule. This is against the rules of Code six ninety-nine and not in the character of our sixty-plus-year-old neighborhood. The previous variance, well, you, we already addressed the variance, so I'll skip that. Uh, the, with respect to the submitted drawings, they are incomplete with regards to grading, but it appears to require retaining wall of eighty-plus feet along Florence Road with a height of over nine feet at certain points, because the road, Florence Road continually goes downhill and the wall gets taller and taller. With the four-story structure proposed in the drawings, the peak roof will be over fifty feet above Florence Road, based on the drawings and the current grade. Uh, this will dwarf other structures on Florence Road, again, not in the character of our neighborhood. Lastly, I would like to note that drainage issues are very concerning. There are already drainage issues on the east side of Florence Road, which would be exacerbated by the additional runoff, which would result from the proposed structure. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. You just made it. Thank you, sir. Ellen Reed, if you would go ahead and if you could avoid repeating what the previous speakers have said.
Yes, I will. Um, I wanted, first of all, Madam Chair and Commissioners, thank you so much for allowing the public to be a part of this process. I appreciate it as a longtime Greenwich native. Um, I spent so much time and I was going to quote six nine, Code six nine nine three B, but I don't have to. And Ms. Jenkins and Mr. McRee said a lot of what I had all prepared for you, but um, you'd be proud. I did do all my homework. Um, I, in addition to agreeing with John and Rich, um, I have very serious concerns about the proposed, the the pre-application proposal in an effort to not repeat what they've already said, because for the record, I agree with those things and I'm concerned about them as well. Um, I did want to point out that when I was looking at the, the attached document that the property owners submitted, on page twelve, there is a very defined pool. Um, and so I don't know if that matters in this conversation, but I did want to mention that that pool was filled in like more than twenty years ago by the previous property owner. And so you don't see it on the Google Earth view, which is the page before or the page after. But I did want to mention because um, the property owners mentioned a lot of hardships, uh, one of which being the property itself, um, which they purchased. And so I, you know, I I had a little bit of an issue because I'm not sure of the fact that there's a drawing of a pool and an outline. I I want to make sure that everyone knows there is not a pool there. And so that's not part of the hardship. It's not an issue. So I just wanted to point out that the, even the sketch isn't quite accurate. So I I don't want to repeat all of the other things.
No, no, please don't. Please don't. Thank you. No.
Thank you so much for letting us.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Um, our last speaker is Ralph Longo. Um, go ahead, sir.
Okay. Again, thank you for what you guys do. You, you all have a lot of stamina. Very, very admirable.
And we're hungry and cranky right now.
Yeah, and I'll be very, very cool. I agree with my neighbors, what they've said in opposition of this. And I just have a few questions. The existing house is more than a thousand square feet, right? And in, believe that the ADU in this zone could be up to a thousand square feet?
Yes.
Okay, so the footprint is, would be a thousand square feet. It's, it's one floor, but it's got a full basement and a two-car garage underneath. So would the basement count and would the garages?
If the basement is um, more than, is less than three feet of, it's three feet, right, of clearance?
It's all based, based on the grade.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, hey, what I'm getting at is it could all be turned into living space someday.
Yeah, it could be, but it doesn't count for a fair, but we get your point.
You got my point.
Yeah.
And my other question would be, would the, are you allowed to rent an ADU and live in a house?
Yes.
You are. Okay.
Yes, owner has to be a resident of the property, but it, they could be the tenant of the smaller unit or the the main residence.
Right, so it could turn into Queens over here, is what I'm getting at. And uh, yeah, and and also one other issue, the landscaping. I don't think that you'd be able to hide the ADU in the rear uh, with landscaping in the front. It's just the grade is too, it it, as Rich said, the grade goes down on Florence Road and the the property stays at a pretty, pretty level. It's really a good buildable lot. Um, it's rectangular and there's probably, it's flat and uh, you know, it is higher in the rear. So, you know, we don't see any hardship there, but that's up to you guys. So that's it. That's all I have for you.
Well, hardship isn't what we do. The ZBA does that, the Zoning Board of Appeals. We don't like hardship. We don't do that stuff.
Gotcha. All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Longo. Um, okay, so Mr. Pulepo. The, the bottom line is, we don't think this works with the regulation. That's the guidance we've given you or that everybody gave you. Um, you heard it from everybody. Um, your neighbors seem to feel the same way, which is something for you to bear in mind, because you have to live with them for more hours than you're going to live with us. We would encourage you to rethink it. You got some free design help, which you should not pay too much attention to because we can't resist sometimes, but it's not our job. We're just telling you rethink it and do something that comes out more consistent with the regulations and the purposes and the intent. You, we can't stop you from applying to us. And if that's what you want to do, we will come to it with an open mind. But listening to the pre-app, we would tell you that we have grave concerns. And that's it. Okay, um, so we'll see you when you come back.
Uh, can I make a quick comment here?
Very quick, sir. We've been doing this for almost an hour now and our goal is twenty minutes. We've really gone out of our way to accommodate you, but we're ready to stop.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm actually seeing two conflicting responses here on the panel side. Uh, there was a suggestion to keep the ADU on the back or a front.
No, no, ignore all the design advice you got. It is not our job to give you design advice. People were just trying to be kind to you. Please don't pay attention to it. I'm sorry. I let them be kind to you. Um, they're architects, they want to help you design, but that's not our work. Our work is to tell you that what you're doing, we don't think meets the zoning regulations and we stop there. Okay, so you can talk to Patrick, you can talk to Patrick afterwards or one of the planners about what might better meet the regulations. But if they told you do sideways, do this, do that, don't go there, please.
I, I just wanted to actually get one quick clarification. Uh, being on a corner lot, which is not my concern or uh, uh, the um, the only thing I want to ask is, is there an ADU allowed here?
Yes, you can have an ADU. We never said that. What our point was to you, sir, is that you are not meeting the goal that it looks subsidiary and accessory, that when you construct, you are not accomplishing the goal of preserving the neighborhood character that we set out for this. Um, that it's got to look like a single-family residential zone. That's what we wanted, to accommodate people's needs while it still looks like a single-family neighborhood.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. All righty, and with that, folks, um, I know Peter Lowe is hungry. You know, he goes from not hungry to hungry. So do I. And look, people loved our raven conversation. So we'll see you guys soon.